John, are you on the right, uh, channel?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, there it goes. Technically, yeah, there are other options out there, but it's the right one, looks like.
Tonight? Oh. I was writing to complain about the poll.
Kevin, here, do some pledge.
You're asking me to?
Yeah, yeah, indeed. I will do it right now, back. He stands for the Pledge and Bejes, being led by Chief Kevin Crowe.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the final regular meeting of the year 2025 with Village Walston Spa. Uh, let us go to minutes. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the November 24th, 2025 meeting be approved?
I like the motion.
Trustee Maneta.
Last second.
Trustee Bryce Bush, discussion.
Couple changes. Public comment one, Liz's, uh, statement or what, it wasn't, the sentence wasn't finished. I think she meant to say, uh, zoning draft, when she asked when it would be released, I think that's what it was. And then on, um, motion A, uh, Mary Price Bush was the second.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No presentations, two walk-ons, uh, one technically is already in the attachments, just didn't get its joining motion, uh, for the seeker approval related to the, to the zoning, but one is say, what phase of seeker is it? Is it the?
It's just the part one and then lead agency.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to aim for there. Also, uh, we had approved this, uh, earlier for tests of, uh, like lead poses, ladder and sensors for the fire department, but, uh, it never actually got submitted. So to get this paid for, uh, before the first year, $4,649.80, we'll just have to approve it since it's not on the abstract, uh, coming up. But, uh, this was to, uh, Fire Equipment Testing Incorporated. So, uh, that will be coming up too as a walk-on.
Are we also doing the BACC funding as a walk-on?
Uh, you tell me if that's ready to go, actually.
It's fine.
Okay. So the BACC contract, uh, will be as well a walk-on for, uh, $17,000 in the contract. There was some, uh, added language, uh, this year for review to ensure that the village's money is being spent on programming. Um, and so we'll talk more about that when we get to it. With those included now, uh, not that we didn't have enough motions for tonight, but I, any agenda item, uh, you can speak to for up to three minutes. Uh, if you're on Zoom and would like to speak to an agenda item, now would be a great time to raise your hand on Zoom. But if anybody in the house here would like to raise their hand and speak, uh, Liz just doesn't wait. She puts her hand right on up for, uh, that purpose, go right ahead.
If someone else wants to do the front.
Your five.
Uh, Liz Cormos, eight and nine, hi. I have two items. One is of the Ethics Board, seven D and E. Why are all but one member of the Ethics Board resigning at the end of this year? I mean, I remember when we did the Ethics Code, there was supposed to only be one member resigning each year. Um, and what impact does that have on cases in front of, currently in front of the board that have languished already for eight months? On the zoning, uh, why wasn't there the draft of the zoning code provided with this motion? You're passing draft on to the planning and zoning boards and there's no prep that anyone can see. Um, I understand the chairs of the planning and zoning boards, uh, we've heard that they'll be resigning at the end of the year. It's a shame that Ben and Sean will not be able to vote on the code that they put so much work into. It appears as if the finalization of the zoning code will be largely decided by new people who have participated with the comprehensive plan in the zoning process.
We'll have some corrections on that, I think, coming up later. On the bails. Name and address, so everyone can get up there.
You bet.
Appreciate it. And then we'll start three minutes after you do that.
Hi, my name is Mike Gormly, 504 Victor Serval. I'm speaking just very briefly here about the resolution involving the, the village police participation with ICE in federal immigration enforcement. First of all, thank you very much for your service. Now, it's a thank, Mr. I've been a difficult one. The, the problem, but the, the resolution supports the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the U.S. Constitution that guarantee due process and equal treatment under the law for any person, any person that is not just citizens or naturalized citizens. And that's backed up by law in undisputed in legal jurisdiction. ICE has violated the Constitution repeatedly. Zip tying children, um, separating mothers and fathers from children, all without due process. This is happening repeatedly. We've seen this. There is a compromise already in place. The village police can and should cooperate with ICE when there's a, there's a state law violation. There's a crime. The village police should not be involved in enforcing federal immigration law. That's not their job. That's not what they're trained for. And frankly, we need them for other, more serious crimes. This is not a Republican or Democratic issue. I don't see it as that at all. I see this as an American values issue. These values in the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments are what I was taught in St. Mary's School and in Boston High School by my teachers and coaches. And this is the kind of thing that is a bedrock issue for us as Americans, not as Republicans and Democrats. This is a problem of, uh, this is a conflict of American values against illegal actions by ICE. These, I suggest, are the, one of those moments that define our village and ourselves. Thanks, love.
We've got a couple, I actually, you want, uh, as you know, Mike Iaculci go first here?
Do I need online first?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to go back and forth more these days.
Yes, Mike Iaculci's first up.
Okay, good evening. Thank you. Mike Iaculci, three Encore Drive. Um, two comments. Uh, first, with respect to motion seven O with respect to a water study. I'm just curious, how much unaccounted for water has there been? And how does that unaccounted for water compare to the total amount of water produced by the village? And then secondly, I want to also speak to, uh, the resolution seven R, the Immigration and Safety Resolution. Quick background, my paternal grandparents were immigrants and I think like most immigrants, they were very good people. My grandmother was in the country on a green card and periodically was required to renew that green card. In the mid 20th century, she felt some fear about the renewal process. She was concerned that she would be, be deemed ineligible and forced to leave the country. Over the last 10 months, because of deliberate decisions and actions of the administration, fear has become pervasive. Federal agents have detained many more people than, quote, violent criminals, unquote. This resolution can provide members of our community a measure of support without compromising what the village police can do. I urge you to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, it's, well, okay, hold on there. Uh, we got Terry from Immigration, Saratoga Immigration. I can't see who the rest of it is.
Do that one?
Yep, might as well. Yeah, that's Coalition's last word.
Can I speak now?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much. I'm, uh, Terry Digory. Um, I am a resident of 173 Circular Street in Saratoga Springs, and I am co-coordinator of the Saratoga Immigration Coalition and also a member of the, uh, Board of Life Works Community Action based in Boston Spa, which has a, uh, division of immigrant services. Uh, and in both of those capacities, I want to speak very much in favor of the resolution regarding immigrant and community safety. Um, we, in the Saratoga Immigration Coalition, uh, try to track activity by ICE in our region. Uh, of course, we're all aware of, um, activity at the end of January of this year, uh, when, uh, there was an incident involving Boston Spa Police where ICE was called in. The police, the police chief at that time, I believe, said that it is not the regular policy of the Boston Spa Police Force, um, to cooperate in immigration enforcement efforts. And as far as I know, that may still be, uh, the practice of the Boston Spa Police. However, especially at this time, I think it's very important to have that practice, um, put into writing um, so that it can be pointed to, um, to offer reassurance to members of the community. As the previous speaker indicated, there's a great deal of fear in the country at, at this time that has in fact spread to not just fear of, uh, immigration enforcement agents like ICE, but all police, um, and, and law enforcement agencies because of the way in which the federal government has been attempting to enlist the cooperation of other law enforcement agencies in immigration enforcement efforts. Uh, so, um, the immigrant community is, is scared when they see anybody from law enforcement. Uh, that means that their trust in law enforcement is eroded and it means that they are that much less likely to approach law enforcement if they wish to report a crime, uh, if they have some concern about community safety. So for the sake of allaying fear, uh, in the immigrant community, but also for the sake of the community as a whole and ensuring that, um, the Boston Spa Police are able to do their job within the community, um, I think that having this policy, uh, enshrined in writing that can be pointed to, um, as the official policy of the police department would be important. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one more on. Who wants to stand on?
Uh, it's only, might as well.
All right. Erin. Erin.
Erin, go ahead.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Erin Willett, 25 Morning Kill Drive. Um, I'm also speaking about, uh, the resolution regarding, um, immigrant and community safety. Um, when Rensselaer County was looking to, uh, participate in the 287G, um, program that would allow their local law enforcement to work with ICE. Um, I spoke then, um, because it was well documented then and it remains well documented now. Um, there are many negative impacts on the community beyond the human impact. Um, there are economic impacts. Uh, it opens up the town for liability and lawsuit, um, that would otherwise be absorbed by federal agencies. Um, it also discourages, uh, immigrant communities from participating in local economies. And it is well documented that local economies suffer when local and law enforcement participate with federal agencies. Now, as other people have really eloquently said before me, um, the most important thing is the human impact. I cannot speak to that personally. I am a citizen. I am white. I am not likely to be profiled by any sort of immigration enforcement. However, I'm a human and I understand fear. And I understand that no child should be afraid that their parent will be taken away from them. And it does not matter if that child screams for their parent in English or in Spanish or in Arabic. So I cannot speak to immigrant impact, but I can speak to human impact. And we have the opportunity to make the humane choice by not allowing our local law enforcement to participate in these utterly inhumane acts. So, thank you.
Anything else in the room? Yep.
Ask Danko, 32 Cat Street. Um, well, we're all, we're all descendants of immigrants. Is that not correct? My grandmother came over here as a orphan at age nine from Ireland. Um, I think the key words are legal, illegal, legal, illegal. I would have nothing to fear if Chief Bush came to my door, knowing that I have done nothing wrong. If I was just at Ocean State and had stole a few dozen items, I probably would be a little fearful. I have complete trust in Chief Bush and his, um, officers. He's got a lot of experience. He knows right from wrong. Again, I don't think anybody's going after anybody in the community if they're legal. If they're illegal, you broke the law. I'm sorry. I get it. You broke the law. I can't break the law and get away with it. Nobody else should break the law. There is a proper way to come into this country and an improper way to come into this country. Thank you.
Dot of flag, 316 Blue Rose.
One more, one more time on the name, just for clerk, I'm sorry.
Dot of flag.
Thank you.
316 Blue Rose, Boston Spa. I'm a little emotional. This is very emotional for me to say. I am honored to sit for this resolution. Um, I'm asking the board to reject any involvement with ICE, their cruel and inhumane treatment of immigrants and the wrongful detention of people who have permitted no crime. It's traumatizing communities and families across this country. We have all seen countless videos showing ICE acting aggressively and without accountability. People seeking a better life for their families should never be treated with the violence and dehumanization we are witnessing. Our immigrant neighbors strengthen this town in countless ways through their work, their families, their culture, and their hope for a better future. They deserve to feel safe in the place they call home. Immigrants also support our local economy. They pay taxes, sustain small business, and contribute billions nationally to Social Security and Medicare, often without ever benefiting from those programs. We cannot support a police department that enables such actions as this will seriously undermine trust, safety, and the foundation of our community. If our police department chooses to cooperate with ICE, we risk driving away people who help sustain our community socially and economically. Fear will replace trust. Families will hide. Crime reporting will drop. And the police will lose the confidence of the very people they're sworn to protect. I ask that you pass this resolution to ensure that trust, safety, and lawful conduct within the Boston Spa Police Department remain intact. And I end with a quote from Abe Lincoln. "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives. I like to see a man live so that his place will be proud of him. Please stand up for the values that make our town worth being proud of."
Uh, next up, Michelle Judah, first. Michelle?
Hi, thank you. Michelle Judah, 34, Van Tasselane. Um, gosh, I don't even, I, I've been thinking all day about where I wanted to start with this. Um, you know, legal versus illegal. Um, entering the country improperly is a, is a civil violation, not a criminal violation. Um, we've been told that the goal here is to go after the worst of the worst of the criminals. Um, I think that when we look at TV and we watch what's happening, that's not what is happening. And we're all complicit in it. We can have conversation about wanting to get criminals off the street and make sure that our communities are safe. We can have conversations about wanting to support our police. Um, I, I'm fully in support of all of those things. Um, and we can have conversations about the fact that our immigration system has been broken for a very long time and both parties know it and nothing's been done to resolve it. People are here in this country because we've turned the other way. We've allowed people to be here. We have utilized them, um, to, they've built businesses. People have talked about that, but they also provide labor, um, significant labor for businesses. And we, we've, we've benefited from that and we've, we've allowed it to happen. DACA, um, the Deferred, um, Action for Child, um, Childhood Entry, we've, we've allowed those people to stay that were brought here as children. They don't know any country other than America. And all of a sudden, we're creating, you know, that this is a criminal act and we're going to sweep these people up and take them away. So I come back to, you know, the, the book, you know, everything I needed to know, I learned in kindergarten. What we see, we know is wrong and we have to stand up for it as being wrong. And we, we, you know, we need to, we need to, you know, cooperate when there's a judge and there's a warrant, um, when there's criminal activity, absolutely. But we know that what we're seeing is wrong and we do need to stand up for the values that we have. To me, this is about being an American and it's about decency. Um, and I really do hope that the board, um, supports the resolution.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, I don't have anything on the agenda items. I'm going to ask if you would just give me three minutes to speak before his line 13. Unfortunately, as a volunteer fire chief, I never know when his page is going off. I would like to get something out tonight to speak publicly, but I don't want to, you know, change up your meeting at all.
If we can ask you to do that. You may have to run down that call. Is the reason you're signing here?
Absolutely.
Does the board, uh, suspend the rule for this purpose?
Yeah.
Kevin Crowe, 103 Independence Drive, and here speaking as fire chief at Boston Spa. I want to reflect back on something that happened here last week with the, uh, loss of Christine Fitzpatrick. Christine and I went through a lot of battles when she was mayor and trustee. Um, at the end of the day, it was business, okay? So, you know, one thing I didn't get to do with Christine is to pretty much lay that out. At the end of the day, it's business, just like it is for all of you and me, okay? We all have the same interest. It's for the people of this community, all right? My interest as well as that is protecting my fire department. Ben and Sean, this is your last meeting, okay? So basically, I came here tonight to have that conversation about our differences, the two, the three of us, right? We've had them over the years, whether it was apparatus or whatever it was. Uh, I appreciate you guys. Um, at the end of the day, it was business, all right? But you guys, at the end of the day, came through. You got me a new fire truck, with your approval, the rest of the board. Um, and this goes for everybody, but these two are outgoing tonight. But you got the fire truck, our fire contract with the, uh, apparatus and two, recently the two town board contracts. I won't take up any more time, just that I appreciate you guys for what you've done for the fire department. And it doesn't go unnoticed, especially for myself, all right? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Kevin, I'm going to bring this up during, uh, Mayor's, uh, comments later on, but since you brought it up, uh, Burnett and I were on a call and I'll talk, talk more about the subject matter, uh, later on in that. Uh, but, uh, we were talking with CDT A about bus shelters, uh, and the status of them. And we have asked that, and there is, uh, some precedent for this and they're looking into it for us, but for the, uh, one that will be next to Resha, uh, to be dedicated in honor of Mayor Christine Fitzpatrick.
Very nice.
Because of her, uh, her big opponent of, uh, that type of, uh, bus, uh, protection, et cetera. And so we felt that was the thing. Yeah. Yes, sir.
You still hold the power?
Yes, you are.
Okay, my name is Dave Bush. I'm the chief of police for the village of Boston Spa. Uh, and unlike probably everybody in this room, uh, I actually do law enforcement. I've done it for 27 years in this village, the last of 10 years as chief of police. In 1998, you asked me, you hired me and you asked me to do a job and I've done it. I've done it well. Then you asked me to be your chief of police. And I've done that for the last 10 years and I've done it well. We had one incident and I explained this last time I spoke at a board meeting. We had one incident. And that incident resulted in me being investigated by the Attorney General to see if there was any wrongdoing. And I appreciate whoever turned us in or made that call to her. We were cleared 100% because we did absolutely nothing wrong. Nothing. And we've had zero, zero incidents with ICE since then. My problem is the fact that if you want me to do a job, you have to trust me to do that job. This resolution, and listen, nobody should ever be hurt. Nobody should ever be harmed. I don't agree with it. I don't believe in that. I am a Christian and I live by those values. And I don't care if you are a 100-year-old born in the Boston Spa resident or you just came here from wherever. You are a human being. That's my belief. My problem comes in is that when we're duplicating things and you're not trusting me to do what you're paying me to do. This resolution is an exact, almost word for word, from the Attorney General's, uh, what she called it here, the guidance concerning local authorities' participation in immigration enforcement. ICE will refuse us to come to the village of Boston Spa and work with the village police department because of that incident. And because of the uproar over that incident, we, we haven't seen ICE since that day. They don't call us. They don't contact us. They have nothing to do with us. Absolutely nothing. Is this a good referendum? Resolution? I don't know. Seems to me like we're just adding more paperwork, a bunch of more paperwork that says the same thing. I have to follow what the Attorney General says. I have to. And it's the same thing that's being said in this resolution.
You have five seconds left, Dave.
I have what?
Five seconds left for this.
Anybody want to give me a little time?
Well, I can bring it back, uh,
Can I have mine?
No, I can bring it back during the actual, uh, discussion of resolution later on if there's a desire or need for that. So I would proudly ask for that.
I only got two things to say. That's right.
Are we, are we okay to suspend again?
He's directly impacted.
All right, so probably you don't realize or, or know, uh, we, we, we at the village of Boston Spa, we have a mission statement. How can I use your glasses?
You have to tell me.
Somehow I don't think this is the first time that's happened.
With this color it is. This is the mission statement of the village of Boston Spa. It is the mission of the Boston Spa Police Department to provide law enforcement services to all citizens and visitors to the village of Boston Spa by being committed to reducing crime, to effective crime prevention, and intelligence-driven policing. It is our mission to treat all people with respect and dignity and to deliver the highest quality of police service working within the framework of the United States and the New York State constitutions. We will conduct ourselves as professionals both on and off duty. That's been our mission statement. Shame on me for probably not getting that out to more people and making them aware of exactly what our mission is. On top of that, the last thing I will say is, um, part of our policy procedures manual is a, uh, called the Law Enforcement Authority for Police. What gives us authority? Okay? What gives us authority? Okay? And the very, very, very last line on that authority is all members, members shall observe and comply with every person's clearly established rights under the United States and the New York State Constitution. We are already doing what you're asking us to do in this resolution. We're already doing it and we've been doing it. That incident back in the early part of the year. I'm not going to call anybody out, but you know what? One of the trustees said to me, when that, when that guy showed up to try to take the folks away, he was a coyote. Those folks were being trafficked. They were. It's been, uh, it's been proven. Did we save lives that night? Maybe. It's a good possibility we did. I don't think we need this resolution. We're already doing it under the guidance of the attorney general's office, almost word for word on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It really wasn't color, by the way. Anybody else? Seeing one. So we just seeing none.
Chris Buick, Six Kaling Drive. Uh, one thing I wanted to make a point of, you know, we see a lot of signs, we hear a lot of slogans, that's fine. What I like to see from my elected officials on any level is a little bit of substance and solutions. And one thing, when I look at something like this with this motion going out with this resolution, uh, take your phone at any time and your computer. And I'd like you to just take a chance and look up Saratoga County unemployment office. Okay. That was something somebody put together during COVID because that was the only place you could go to try to get answers about unemployment insurance benefits. We don't have an unemployment insurance office or haven't been for years and been closed down. That is a place to help people with getting back to work. Of course, we'll help them with unemployment insurance needs. But when that came up, we got flooded, we got undated from people all across the county, including other counties coming to our office looking for services, that we weren't there as a sole provider. The concern with this resolution is it sort of gives out a public image that this is a village to definitely come to. Because if you feel that you could possibly be targeted for lies, this is the place to come to. But you don't look at the impact that would cause on local services. This wouldn't just bring individuals, this would bring families. What about a local school district? Right now you have ESL programs in Malta that was set up for when, um, the chip plan came in. Global foundries for a lot of families. The engineers were international and provide those services for their children. Do they have enough ESL teachers if you had a large influx of immigrant families coming here because they're looking for shelter against ICE? Have you looked at the local labor markets, the middle of winter, a lot of jobs that are labor intensive out there, groundskeeping, construction, the track even, where there are a lot of good jobs, where they already have programs established for temporary work visas for immigrants that come in. What jobs are these people going to have this time of year? There are none. The labor market takes a drastic turn until spring. So again, you're putting a message out there and I understand the intent behind the message, but the timing is just poor as can be. And if you've ever stopped in the social services, you would see the stacks of suitcases and garbage bags of people's personal belongings. Because we also have a housing problem where we can't even give temporary housing to our own residents. And I'm talking counting why, not even just the village. What are you going to do for housing? It's the middle of winter. We can't even provide housing for our own residents. So again, there's a lot of heart behind this. I can understand it. But the rollout of it and the public image it causes and what consequences that could, that wasn't the thought held. This incident that everybody was so conservative in January, you had all summer if you wanted to put something like this together, where there were plentiful jobs. There would have been no school. You could have worked with the school district, Dr. Duke could have tried to see if there were enough ESL teachers. Instead you want to put something out with a sad story behind it. That's great. But what do you have in place to support that when people start coming because they feel this is a place that's safe for them? But then there's not enough services for their families or for the individuals.
Ten seconds.
So I consider this is not a good time to put this out. Because again, we saw the effects of good intentions and the public image it caused and the influx of people coming for services. We just weren't prepared to provide and that something similar will happen with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call. Okay. There is no dissent agenda. Can I get a motion that the resignation of village clerk Terry O'Connor be accepted after, or effective, excuse me, December 19th, 2025 for the purpose of retirement?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. Can I vote no?
Yeah. I wanted to say certainly with regrets and very much appreciate Terry's service over the years to this village. It, it's her care and dedication to the people of this community and our government is really honestly something to be, uh, lauded. So yes, we accept it, but not willingly.
I'll speak more to it during Mayor's announcements. Personally, anybody else?
Yeah, just Terry, thank you. Thank you for always being professional and friendly and a good ear.
Ben, Sean?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Terry. I wish you well in your retirement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion approving the cashing out by Terry O'Connor of any unused vacation and or sick days on her resignation.
I like the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Does this stuff get to the state? Sometimes stuff like this comes to the state.
I don't have any of that. I don't get involved in retirement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion that the resignation of the, uh, can I get a motion that the resignation of ethics board member Julie Gazetos be accepted effective 12/31/25? Trustee Fandanza.
Second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. She's a judge now, uh, as of 1/1/26. So there you go. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion that the resignation of ethics board member Carrie Curran be accepted effective 12/26/25?
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Just thank her for her service. She wrote a nice note to the board about it.
All favor?
Yeah, I also want to thank her and, uh, clearly there was, uh, has been a lot, a lot of confusion and a lack of, uh, tracking of when, uh, times were, uh, were up. So, uh, it's created a little bit of a mess currently. And, uh, we should talk about that at some point. I have it later in the agenda. We can talk about it there. Um, I want to thank, uh, Carrie Curran for her service.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resignation of ethics board member Mandy Ryder be accepted effective immediately?
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Also, Mandy's a wonderful person and thank you for her time that she served on the ethics committee and many other sort of roles in the community.
Absolutely. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the resignation of court clerk Kristen Valentine be accepted effective 12/31/25?
Make the motion.
Trustee Price Bush.
I'll second.
Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that Del Compton be appointed as a part-time court clerk? Uh, Terry, what's the effective date for Del?
You know what? I wasn't told that. I don't know. I would believe it would be January 1st.
I, well, no, I think, I think they're looking to do overlap right now for training purposes. So I'm going to say effective immediately.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
Trustee Price Bush.
I'll second.
Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion that Heather Fitzpatrick be appointed as a part-time court, uh, court clerk, uh, effective immediately.
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza. Trustee Raymond, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion that Matthew D. Wyrath, or Wellrath, excuse me, that's Wyrath, uh, be appointed a member of Eagle Matt Lead Fire Company number one and the Boston Spa Fire Department.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion that Anna Frazier be removed from the roles of, uh, Eagle Matt Lead Fire Company number one and Boston Spa Fire Department.
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the Boston Spa Fire Department be authorized to expend the amount of $7,705 for medical screening services?
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
Second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that Joe Ritchie be permitted to utilize Eagle Matt Lead Firehouse for a private event on December 27th, 2025?
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to refer the attached, no, I can't.
Please seek her first.
Carla, can you, uh, tell me when my motion should be next?
Uh, it's a motion to declare, to declare the village board trustees lead agency for the zoning code.
That motion.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
This is only about lead agency?
This is only lead agency. It allows the village board to go forward and send out letters to all the different agencies and to move forward on the seeker process.
Do we need a reader or dispense with it?
All right.
No.
The letter M, we're still going back to that?
Yes, you can't, you can't do M until you do seeker. You have to do it at the earliest part of the action.
Uh, let's do roll call for the purpose of, uh, this.
Trustee Fandanza?
Yes.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Rossy?
And yes. Now can I?
You can do that.
That's it. I get a motion to refer the attached zoning code to the village planning board for review and recommendation pursuant to village code section 205-74B and to the zoning board for review and recommendation.
Make the motion.
Trustee, uh, Price Bush, trustee Raymond, discussion.
Yeah, I have a statement to make. Should I make it now or should I make it?
It's discussion, so I mean.
All right. I wasn't sure if we're going through all the different, the process of seeker and everything else. Is that somewhere else?
It was just seeker lead agency.
Oh, we're not going through the seeker form or whatever?
No, you have to declare lead agency and then you have to, you have 30 days to hear back from all the different municipalities and the different permitting authorities to determine whether or not they're going to take lead agency. Then you go through it.
Through seeker.
Through parts two and three. Yes.
All right. Just because it was on the attachments, I thought we'd go through.
Yeah, the attachment was part one.
Just part one. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Yes, I have a statement I'd like to make about the zoning and the zoning process. First, I want to thank Chris Kuchel for sticking with the village, even though the process the village has followed was a fiasco from start to finish through no fault of his own. He has been very timely and responsive to board direction and requests for information. I'm glad to see that a number of improvements I championed have been incorporated, including limit on apartment building size, allowing two-family dwellings in R1 with restrictions, a limit on building size in the gateway district, ensuring all planning board, ZVA, zoning board, field members and alternates are residents of the village, adding design standards for non-residential uses in residential zones. This is, this is really important. However, I am troubled by the process that the mayor pursued in getting us to this point. A process which has directly resulted in numerous critical issues going undiscussed and unresolved. First came the fiasco of the zoning advisory committee, which was undermined by its chair matter of line with the mayor's guidance and support, culminating in the unilateral, undemocratic abrupt dissolution of the committee right when it was about to issue its recommendations. We'll never know what those recommendations would have been. The mayor essentially did this exact same thing with the village board by going AWOL in zoning work over the last five months. First by letting three months lapse between the first and second zoning, special zoning meetings, with only myself pushing for additional meetings and discussion between meetings. Following the second meeting in October, there was no more discussion for another month other than lie emails, which followed on November 24th, with the mayor's unplanned unwritten motion aborting the deliberative process and reverting it back to only what was decided at the second zoning meeting a month earlier, even though everyone, including the mayor, agreed at that second meeting to continue discussing the significant issues that remained. I want to thank trustee Price Bush for continuing to provide her input during this time. Some issues that we all agree are important have never been discussed and resolved. They include changes to the zoning map to put quote suburban, no sidewalk zones together in their own zone and restrict the uses for those zones further than 1B. That's a critical conversation to have. It's huge. Expanding the R2 zone, a kind of substitute for a transition zone. We should at least add lower malt ad. And Bernadette expressed that desire at the second meeting and that we would discuss it and want, and she wanted to explore this further, but we never did. Uh, correcting the incorrect calculations of 90th percentile lot size so they actually correspond with reality. The minimum lot sizes are currently way too small in this draft, as everyone acknowledges, but no one does anything about. We have known this for over a month and Chris in the last week confirmed this. In just about every email I ask for the board's opinion, usually to little effect, so we could know where we stand. This is about the mayor and the board not doing its job after not allowing the ZAC to do its job before that. Other issues which haven't received nearly enough attention include cluster zoning in the residential neighborhoods, updating of the historic district code to the model state code. This was unilaterally booted down the road by the mayor. Accessory dwelling unit zoning, Airbnb zoning, which the Airbnb's are outlawed by this draft, people should know. All these could and should have been included with this zoning. Behind this fiasco of a process to silence, sabotage and foot dragging is the unspoken issue of control. You can bet the mayor's top priority is to consolidate control, which is, which is what he'll get after Sean and I are no longer on the board. I'm sorry to say I'm not going to rubber stamp this undemocratic mess of a process. We will now send this to the PV and ZVA and their chairs have submitted resignation emails, so their ability to review is compromised. The mayor has stated repeatedly that this process will take two public hearings because he knows it's not done. The public needs to hold him to that. But at this point in time, this draft is unfinished, as everyone on the board has acknowledged, and should not yet be sent to the PV and ZVA. I vote no.
Two quick questions. Uh, Terry, how many meetings have I missed in the last year?
Nine.
One. I didn't go AWOL. I'm not sure what that is.
Between meetings, you're completely AWOL.
It's my turn. Everybody, let's just speak. Anna, uh, zoning board wise, uh, has the zoning board in full reviewed this?
Have we reviewed it?
Yeah.
No.
Paul, you're a member of the planning board?
That's my dog.
It's time for the people that are actually going to be using this code to review this code. It's also time for the people that are the public that will be affected most by this code to look at it and give their final thoughts on it as we progress here over the next few months. It's time. I don't know why you, for three months, we've been telling you you, you're, you've clutched onto this spend and it was time to sort of let it loose, to fix it along with other people that are important in the process and you haven't let it happen. So I don't know what to tell you. I wanted you to be able to, uh, have legacy with this. I told you that in this meeting twice. And you couldn't let go of it. So I don't know what to tell you.
Right. Well, we could have been at the exact same point with, with a better completed zoning draft. Uh, even at this point in time, if we had run out of time, the zoning draft should be better. I would vote yes if the zoning draft had addressed all the issues we should have addressed in the time that we had and we failed to do that. And that's why I say you were AWOL because you failed to do that. I tried. I tried the best I could. Even you will tell, say how many emails I sent trying to get you to show up.
Can I everybody, Sean?
I'm one person of the five-person board, Ben.
Yeah, you lead this board.
I, I lead this board?
You lead this board.
Technically.
Do you realize how much hard time I get all the time? Ben, I, I mean, we've kind of hit a point where we need to have our, our boards that will work with us, give input. There are things that you think are slam dunks agreement, but I don't think there is. And I mean, I appreciate that Chris and Carla got it as close to where we are now. Um, I'm looking forward to the comments from both of those boards and, um, from the public as well as they'll go out again. So, um, happy to see this move forward.
All I would have to say on this is that I do think there's more work to be done. I'm not, and obviously it's, it's up to the future board, um, whether or not they want to move this forward or work on it. But I do agree with Ben that there are certain areas that need to be further fleshed out. I just hope that that process, if it's going to move forward, those issues are fully addressed by the planning board. And those issues are fully vetted and given to the public for their consumption. So we can hear their piece, um, because it's really their zoning. It's, it's not the planning board, it's not ours, it's theirs. So, um, they have to be satisfied with it.
Welcome. Yeah, just to be clear, this is a motion to, uh, refer, so. Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She already resigned. Early retirement.
Yes.
Trustee Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Baskin?
No.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, four to one, uh, motion to refer is approved. Can I get a motion reapproving the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet fire police truck for the, uh, Boston Spa Fire Department for the price of $92,680.7 cents. The prior approval was for $89,180. It was intended to be paid using an installment contract. The fire department Yes. Uh, four to one. Uh, motion to refer is approved. I get a motion reapproving the purchase of a twenty twenty four Chevrolet fire police truck for the Boston Spa Fire Department for the price of ninety two thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, seven cents. The prior approval was for eighty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. It was intended to be paid using an installment contract. The fire department has, the fire department has opted to utilize truck reserve funds, which totaled just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars before the end of fiscal year twenty twenty five for the purchase. Price increase is caused by body and lighting cost changes.
Make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. All favor?
I have.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, you can go get the truck now. I get a motion approving the attached agreement for leak detection mapping services to be provided by GPRS Incorporated to the village of Boston Spa for the cost of twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement and any other related paperwork.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandanza?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Sir, go ahead.
I was going to answer, actually, Mike, I could have given you a question, I think, about this earlier, if I could, to just clear that up.
Sure.
Uh, basically about thirty percent or seventy to eighty million gallons is the answer. Now, that's not all assumed to be lost. Um, some things aren't tracked, like the pool, uh, isn't necessarily tracked, hydrogen flushes aren't necessarily tracked, any fire party usage sometimes isn't tracked. Uh, but, um, there's two philosophies going on right now. I was going to get into this more in the mayor's announcements, but I'll give you a little piece of it right now. Um, the two philosophies are there are leaks, uh, in certain places that we're not aware of, and so that's what this is geared toward. And there's also concern that it may be old meters, uh, that are, uh, not precise in the calculation or capture of, uh, water going through because they start to lose effectiveness in certain cases over time. And/or the wrong type of meter in certain high, uh, use facilities. So we're trying to do a bifurcated approach here by our DVW's request, and this also, this motion, uh, will, and by the way, that, that water loss has been consistent over since before my time, probably before your time. It's, it's just been there and never been really resolved, so we're trying to attack that once and for all here. It will never hit zero. It will, you know, the goal is probably get it to around ten percent, which would be about normal, uh, for what water loss would be, or at least for not tracking it. Also, though, this will provide a lack, it will rectify a lack of mapping our own DVW has for our water system because GPRS will provide a full within four inches mapping of our water infrastructure underground. Uh, it's not to the centimeter, but this will be close enough for them to be able to detect or find that water infrastructure because some of the old mapping just isn't very valuable or doesn't make much sense anymore in certain cases. So this is something that they've really asked us to do, is get them the mapping, uh, in this situation. So this is a guilty versus one stone type of motion right here, and the letter from Don Rhodes explains the other parts of it that was in the attachments.
Did we need a bid? Do we need to send this out to bid?
It's professional services. So no.
Did we seek out?
Don Rhodes has been in this, uh, for a number of years. Do you want to speak to that at all?
I mean, I've worked with Don for ten years, twelve years. I don't know about this, but he has a, a host of folks that they subcontracted with. I don't know where this came from, but I mean, legally, there's no requirement for the village to go out and obtain goals.
In this case, too, it's, uh, they're going to lock us into the pricing before the end of the year because they were going to jump price on this. So it sort of takes advantage of this pricing and gets, like I said, a couple of the first pieces of this. Uh, the intention ultimately is to actually begin to make the case for grant money, uh, that basically your system has to be red flagged of failing for the mayor state to give you grants. Uh, we are kind of pressed for time to do it, but we can probably get a summer twenty twenty six grant application out using the information we glean from these things. And, uh, even if we don't get it, at least it puts us in better position the following year to probably, uh, get that same grant to make improvements on our water system, make improvements on meters, uh, and among other things. I'll talk more about that a little bit later, but, uh, it gives you the idea here that this is again a part of an approach right now to once and for all attack the water system, uh, in terms of its weaknesses and getting it into a better spot. All in favor?
I have.
I have.
Opposed? Motion carries. I hate this one. Uh, I get a motion allowing DVW to purchase two hundred tons of salt from Morton's Salt for a total of twelve thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. Trustee Raymond. Trustee Raymond, then trustee Fandanza, then in that order. Sorry, Terry. Discussion. Stop snowing. All favor?
I have.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You don't want to see the order. I, I put it.
Oh, I can only. Stop snowing. Uh, I get a motion approving the reimbursement for sidewalk repair slash replacement of the sum of four thousand dollars to Charles and Natalie Lavandola for work performed at sixty three East High Street. Trustee Fandanza?
A second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I'm glad they fixed it.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just happy that it, it got repaired. People noticed, I think, so.
Yeah, that's a corner lot also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And it went through the whole.
Yep.
Loops, the, the permit and the inspections and all that stuff.
Got in at the last second on Friday, uh, because we're ready for Scott to sign off on any bit.
Did we ever establish a cap?
Four thousand.
Four thousand is a cap.
All in favor?
I have.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get a motion to adopt the attached immigrant and community safety resolution.
Make the motion.
Trustee Baskin?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
I'm still thinking about the last motion. If, I don't remember another one. Is there, is that, uh, one of the only times we probably had the sidewalk piece, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
For the sidewalk, the one before, is, it would be good to get a total of how many sidewalk, how much money we paid for sidewalks at some point. I just think about, all right, next motion. Um, yeah, so I could, I guess I'll start by just reading the motion. I want to thank people for their support, and we'll talk about some of the concerns that we've heard. Um, so this is a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa regarding immigrant and community safety. Whereas the Village of Boston Spa is committed to ensuring the safety, dignity, and human rights of all residents regardless of race, religion, immigration status, or national origin, and whereas policies that foster trust and cooperation between immigrant communities and local authorities are critical to public safety, and whereas when all members of the community feel safe to report crimes, seek medical help, go to court, and seek services without fear of deportation, it increases the safety and security of the entire community. And whereas the Boston Spa Police Department's role is to protect all individuals, and individuals should not be afraid to contact the police if they are the victim or witness of a crime because they are concerned the police will inquire as to the immigration status, and whereas immigrants pay taxes and contribute to the life of this community, and whereas the Supreme Court has clarified that immigration enforcement is solely the duty, duty of the federal government, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa enacts the following policy. Number one, the Village of Boston Spa Police Department is prohibited from honoring detainee requests from federal immigration agencies for persons suspected of violating civil immigration law. Police will not detain a person for transfer to federal immigration agencies for possible deportation with the following exceptions: people with convictions for violent crime or felony, people on the federal terrorist watch list, and when federal immigration officials have a judicial warrant. Note, number two, no Boston Spa law enforcement officer shall inquire about an individual's immigration status unless, one, such officer is investigating an individual's illegal activity, and two, such individual's immigration status is relevant to the illegal activity under investigation. Nothing in this section shall restrict law enforcement officers from seeking documents for the purpose of identification following arrest. Number three, Boston Spa law enforcement officers shall not use village resources, equipment, or personnel for the purpose of detecting and apprehending any individual suspected of or wanted only for violating a civil immigration offense. Such law enforcement officers shall not have authority to take any police action solely because a person is an undocumented noncitizen, including but not limited to identifying, questioning, detaining, or demanding to inspect federal immigration documents. Number four, Boston Spa police and village employees shall not provide federal immigration authorities access to an individual in village police custody or the use of village facilities to question or interview such individual for the sole purpose of enforcement of federal immigration law. Number five is the last one. Whenever any village officer or employee receives a request from a federal law enforcement agency for the village to provide support or assistance intended to further immigration enforcement, such officer or employee shall make a record relating to such request, including any actions taken in response, which shall be made publicly available stripped of all personal identifiers. All such requests from federal immigration officials will be reviewed in advance of response by the mayor and council for the village. Nothing in this resolution shall prohibit village officers and employees from performing their duties in accordance with state and local law, and nothing in this resolution shall prevent any village officer or employee from complying with federal law. All right, so I have, I do have a, a statement. I, you've heard my voice for a while. I don't know if other people want to talk, and then I'll make a statement.
Just go ahead.
Just go ahead. Okay. First of all, I just want to let Chief Bush know, that's the first I heard that the attorney general's office was contacted and you were investigated, so that's, that's interesting. And I do want to, um, state, though, that we are in a completely unprecedented time in this country. So whatever experience we've had with ICE prior to this does not apply in terms of how we interact in their presence in our community. Um, I think things will only get worse, uh, based on what we know. So, all right, so the statement I have is this policy states in effect that village police, and by extension, our village as a whole, will not participate in immigration enforcement. It does not prevent federal officials from carrying out their immigration enforcement duties, nor does it shield immigrants from prosecution for criminal activities. Police will still enforce criminal laws against immigrants who are accused of committing a crime. When you come into this village, you pass a sign that reads Village of Friends. This policy, this resolution simply affirms the values behind that sign. In a village of friends, we value and support our neighbors regardless of where they are from. We do not want our friends and neighbors to live in fear, to be ripped from their families, their community, their homes, their jobs, often in brutal violation of their constitutional rights. ICE does not care if you have a child in the backseat of your car or waiting for you at home or waiting to get picked up from school. ICE's goal is fear and terror, not just for immigrants, but for everyone who depends on immigrants or who comes from a family of immigrants, and that is many of us. Let's not pretend ICE is only going after violent criminals. Over sixty percent of those detained in New York have no criminal record. Of those who do, a traffic violation is the most common offense. People in the U.S. shouldn't be disappeared for a traffic violation. They shouldn't lose their kids, their spouse, their home, their job. That's not how we should treat people who come here and work hard for a better life. In April, ICE arrested a hundred and three, thirty-three people in upstate New York. Only twenty had previous convictions. Eighty-five percent had no record. This past week, ten Afghan immigrants were arrested in Albany without explanation. The Times Union reports, quote, "Such roundups have left people afraid to go to school, prayers, or shopping. For our friends and neighbors to live in such fear of our government should shame us all." They continue, "ICE appears to be sweeping up anyone it wants to on any pretext or none at all: foreign exchange students, farm and food workers, undocumented immigrants, legal residents, and in some cases, citizens. ICE has been doing this even in violation of the courts," unquote. Really, people are just stopped based on the color of their skin. And that's not what this Village of Friends is about. I think the most important consideration here is how we want our friends and neighbors to be treated and whether we prefer our community to be a home or to be a hunting ground. That's why I introduced this to the resolution, to affirm the values of our community. And I'd like to think that the resolution is, is no reflection on our local police whatsoever. It is supposed to be helpful as a guidance document, and I would hope that police would feel supported by that, that they have a village policy that they can point to when they are pressured by ICE to, to cooperate with them, and they could say, uh, no, we don't do that in this, in this community. And so it's meant to be as a support, um, and, and nothing else. Um, and it's, and not meant to interfere, and it wouldn't interfere in any way with your other responsibility. Um, so I have more points today, but I could stop there.
I guess I, I'll say something. Um, so, you know, based on everything I've heard, um, and the chief speaking and other folks speaking, um, as the police chief said, this is something that the attorney general pretty much has already, uh, put out, they already conform to. So I don't see any real extra burden if we pass this at the local level because it's basically the exact same thing that already needs to be followed. It's just reinforcing it at a local level. Secondly, um, I have every confidence in the police department that they're going to follow the attorney general's guidelines one way or the other. I, I believe they're not going to engage in the, you know, uh, detaining of, uh, people based on their immigration status. I think anybody that gets detained is because of a criminal act or a infraction of the law. What I feel most importantly about this resolution was item number five is essentially providing aid in the performance of those, um, the performance of ICE's, um, detaining, uh, individuals, uh, is that we see it all through the country. People protesting when ICE goes out into neighborhoods, people filming, people being accosted, not only by ICE, but by the local police force that was brought out to aid and abet the ICE agents and their duties. So those folks protesting have a constitutional right to do so. And the fact that there are police forces denying them their constitutional rights is appalling, and we all should be ashamed of it. Because where does it end? Where does it end? Does it end with people getting bags put over their heads? And once this version of the other is dealt with, what is the next version of the other? Is it you? Is it our neighbor? I just, my opinion on this is I think there's some good things about this resolution, in particular that, and if it can protect our constitutional rights so that if we feel what is going on is wrong, we can protest while they're doing that wrong thing, I think we should absolutely pass this.
Give my name?
Oh.
Terry?
Go ahead. I was going to speak.
Go for it.
Um, I wanted to say, first off, I, personally, I don't like what I'm seeing nationally. It breaks my heart. Um, where I have issue with this resolution, I, I just feel like this isn't the right venue. New York State, if we're going to have protections created, it makes more sense to me that it's coming from the state, um, so that it's kind of uniform and applied evenly, um, from municipality to municipality. Um, already, there are, you know, protections in place. Green light law doesn't allow anybody who uses, uh, DMV, uh, information, um, to provide that for ICE. They're not allowed to do that. It's a, it's a, it's a felony, actually. Um, New York State in twenty twenty-two made unlawful, uh, to discriminate a person's citizenship or immigration status. Um, as you heard from Chief Bush, he is currently following, uh, guidance from, uh, the AG. So I just think that it makes more sense that it's handled in a more uniform fashion. We saw Chris raise some of my concerns, you know, what kind of services do we have available if we do get an influx of people? Because, uh, if any action's taken to make this like a sanctuary community. Um, so I, I appreciate the heart behind it. I think it's beyond what our village needs. I appreciate that Chief Bush is already acting in this manner, and I hundred percent trust that. He said that from January after that, um, incident. Uh, I appreciate the actions that our board has taken, and Ben, you and I are not often on the same page, but when it comes to translation services, like, I agree with you on that, and I, I look forward to, um, you know, finally picking a contract. I don't know if. Provider. Um, so I just, Sertor County. So just Saratoga County, more the village, we are not in any 287G agreement. We're not part of that program. I believe Rensselaer County is the only one locally that's a participant of that. I don't want to see that in this community. And we're already acting, following, you know, state guidance. And should we need something further, I really think it should come from the legislature so that it's consistent from community to community.
So the point was made that because the state has it, there's no harm in passing that. That is actually untrue. Running this through some AI, which is actual professional AI that looks at the actual wording of this, I asked the questions about, would this actually affect federal funding possibilities for the village, among other things? The current federal posture on sanctuary funding, this is a sanctuary village resolution. I don't care what you're wording it, it is a sanctuary village resolution. Recent executive orders and a 2025 Attorney General memorandum direct DOJ and other agencies to identify, quote, "sanctuary jurisdictions that limit cooperation with federal immigration enforcement and to seek suspension or termination of certain federal funds to those jurisdictions." DOJ criteria for the sanctuary status now expressly includes laws or policies that restrict use of local funds or resources to support federal immigration enforcement, or that limit jail access for ICE, both of which your resolution would do. Continuing, how this specific resolution fits, the resolution focuses on declining civil detainees, limiting officers' questions, restricting use of village resources, and controlling ICE access. Classic, quote, "sanctuary-style features" that advocacy groups have, or don't have not, by themselves, have been held to violate federal law or automatically disqualify jurisdictions from all federal grants. However, because current DOJ guidance and executive orders treat such policies as potential obstruction, quote unquote, adopting the resolution could put Boston Spa on a DOJ, quote, "sanctuary jurisdiction list" and trigger additional scrutiny or threats to certain justice-related or public safety grants, even if those threats are later narrowed or blocked in court. More or less that means that having a policy that's a general policy at our police level in and of itself would not trigger this, but passing a law or code or resolution in the way that is being contemplated here would actually trigger it. If you find I'm incorrect on that from a legal perspective, go ahead.
No, that was what I'm not gonna say that I raised.
Yeah, I have a response if you want me to do it.
Well, go ahead.
Okay. Firstly, our village doesn't rely on federal funds for its operations this year. I don't know that we're getting any federal funds. What funds, federal funds, we do get, flow through the state, and the state allocates it to us, and any federal funding cuts for New York State as a whole will not be necessarily based on our individual municipal actions. The allocation of those funds will be done by the state, not the federal government. There are, you know, we had ARPA funds, that was a one-time thing, they're gone. There is a small chance through, say, Taco's office, we could get a federal grant. He tried before, and we didn't get it, and there's no reason to necessarily think we're gonna get it in this environment anyway. Trump is basically out to get New York State as a whole. You know, I guess my opinion is, if we balance the small chance, very small chance, that we get a federal grant with a very real threat to our community, and the assertion of our community values, that is where we should put our energy and effort, is to protect our neighbors and assert, "We are with you, these are our values." Because it's not likely we're gonna get it, or it's not a zero chance, but it's not a large chance we're gonna get a direct federal grant in this environment.
November 17, 2025, from Emily Silverberg from Congressman Paul Taco's office. Good afternoon, I hope this email finds you well. I am reaching out to update you on the status of fiscal year 2026 federal budget process and your community project funding request. As you may be aware, Congress did not reach a final year-long deal for the full fiscal year 2026 federal budget after a lengthy shutdown on November 12, 2025. President signed into law a funding package that included both a short-term continuing resolution through January 30, 2026, and a full-year fiscal year 2026 package for three appropriations bills out of 12. The three full-year bills did include community project funding under the agricultural, agriculture and military construction and veterans affairs accounts. Please note that your project is in a different account, has not yet been funded. However, negotiations for a fiscal year 2026 federal budget, which will hopefully include community project funding, are ongoing. Once again, there is uncertainty around the timeline going forward for finalizing a fiscal year 2026 budget for the remainder of the bills. And if Congress passes a long-term spending bill, there is the possibility that it may or may not include community project funding, depending on how negotiations go. Back at the agriculture and military instruction accounts included for community projects, though, is an encouraging sign. Once we know more about the remainder of the fiscal year 2026, we will be in touch. Please feel free to ask questions in the meantime. This is in reference to our $500,000 grant that we are basically having chaperoned by Congressman Taco through the federal government for purposes of sidewalk connectivity. So in fact, you're incorrect. We do serve, or stand a chance to get federal funding directly.
Yeah.
Never said we'd have a chance. But he's correct in that it's administered through the state.
No, this is actually direct from federal agency.
Is this, Congressman Taco's administering it, correct?
A federal agency.
And he's a state official, correct?
No, he's a federal official.
Federal official.
Yes, so that's why I'm.
Yeah, so what you read is that there is still a chance we might get money in the future. Yes, that is always a possibility, and it's even possible, if we pass this resolution, we could get those funds. So Trump likes to use the threat of withholding money to punish and extort and threaten people and universities and states, municipalities, and the question is whether we resist. The question is whether we take a stand for our values, or we say, "We don't have values here. We have just a financial interest in what we're doing." So I think it's important to resist the extortion and coercion of this administration and to assert our values. And in this case, again, there is no guarantee we're ever getting that money. We are not kissing away $500,000 tonight. And so I think it's more important to say tonight, and, you know, to our friends and neighbors, that we value them, and we're not going to be threatened or coerced by Trump's threats.
I think our chief of police actually said that from the podium about an hour ago. And I think that that in and of itself should tell you a lot about the way we are policed in this village in the first place. As one of our guests knows, this weekend, there was a protest occurring that didn't put it in for filing. And from my understanding, I was in town on Saturday, but I heard nothing, so I'm gonna assume, chief, that everything went okay in terms of your police force cooperated, make sure that everybody was in a good spot on Saturday.
No issues.
And so that's our policing here in the Village of Boston Spa. Respect, excuse me, respectful, abiding by the law, but at the same time, being respectful to the people that want to be here and act and do things that they find natural, we get that. And so I think that's a good example of what we do here in Village of Boston Spa.
Well, I just wanna, oh, go ahead. Berndad, you had something to say?
No.
Oh, I thought you.
I moved my hands.
I just wanted to clarify something a little bit. The AG's office does encourage localities to create their own policies and laws with, and they provide model language to do that. So this is not redundant in that sense. She, they encourage this, what we're doing. And when we, and also, we see Saratoga County, their police are cooperating with ICE, according to, you know, Facebook posts. So that happened, and so there's a reason for.
This is Boston Spa?
I know, but there's a reason for people with, who have, people of color in this area to be fearful of police, and it would be reassuring to them for this village to say, "We're not going to do that. We're not gonna do what Saratoga County police do. We're going to operate differently." So, I mean, Chief Bush, as long as you're here, I guess we could, and you're saying this resolution's not required, I just, do we get your assurance that you'll, you know, you're not gonna detain people, which means hold them longer than they're, than they normally would?
That's against the law. The state has law.
Right, right, right. You're not gonna do that.
How are you gonna do that? That's against the law.
Let him just finish this.
Yeah, it's still, it's still put in local law as well. And then, would you say?
You wanted to repeat what you said an hour ago.
No, I'm, what, no, there's specific things in here. No, there's, there's specific items in here that it would be great to hear Chief Bush just reassure the public, he is not going, his force won't do. So here's one, "No Boston Spa law enforcement officer shall inquire about an individual's immigration status unless it's related to the crime." I mean, you won't, so you say you won't do that? You won't ask about their immigration status?
If it's not part of the crime, there's no reason to ask.
All right, so you won't ask. All right, thank you. The next one is.
Okay.
What?
I don't think, he made a statement. He made a statement, and.
This is, this is a.
I think it's a little problematic to go part, like, piece by piece, and how are you gonna work with this, and how are you gonna do that? Going back to your thing about whether you can honor a detainer, New York State appellate court ruled in 2018 that they cannot do that. So that is, like, the court's already ruled on that. So I guess, I guess that's kind of my point. It's, it is, it's problematic, at least the way I see it, that we don't have, like, the state more overwhelmingly witting in if this is what New York State wants. It's a conflict, obviously. I just think it's really unfair, to some degree, that we're making municipalities have to make policy related to federal, you know, immigration and stuff. So I just, I think, I don't know.
I guess in response, what he said, "I see it as an opportunity."
Did you say something? No, no, I just, I couldn't hear very well.
Officer Ackley's gotta stand up. I don't know if you want him to speak right now.
Yeah.
Officer Ackley's gotta stand up. Okay, that's what I'm thinking. I assumed that, but I just wanted to make sure you saw it.
I guess, heard that. I hear what you're saying about, you know, doing this one municipality either, but on the other hand, this is a, an opportunity for our, our community to express our support for immigrants and to express our values. And even if the detainer piece is not required in this, in this resolution, even though you will find it in multiple local resolutions, there are other pieces here that the attorney general does recommend we adopt. And so the number two was asking about immigration status. The number two, the number three is not using village resources for the purpose of detecting and apprehending any individual. So, Chief Bush, you're not gonna do that, right?
We have probably just a fraction of the resources that the federal government has. So they won't be looking for us for nothing, because we don't have anything to give them.
All right, great, because Saratoga Springs Police did that. They detained people, they asked them about immigration status, and held them until ICE could come. So I'm very happy that you will not do what Saratoga County police has.
I'm just saying, we can't do it.
Okay.
We don't have a holding facility. We are not registered as a holding facility. We're not allowed to hold prisoners.
Can we just call the vote? This point is needed.
I can.
I think everybody would be interested, with the exception of Mary, but at this point, you can feel like the chief has spoken.
Okay, this is supposed to be at this table, this.
All right.
Bernie, I've made a motion to, don't start the debate and go to vote.
Honestly, we've all set our piece on it. I don't, Mary, with, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add, but I think at this point.
It would be redundant. I feel that the state has it at their level. I think people who come into our community feel safe coming into our community, and it's this kind of talk where you're saying, "Watch out, the police are gonna hold you." The police, you make people anxious about the police. I think the police have proven that they're professional, they're not profiling, they're not looking to arrest anybody. It, that's a lot of paperwork. They'd worry us if they don't have to.
This whole conversation was, was to reassure people about that, those points. Because I don't, it's not me. People see what's happening, and they are scared, and it's not because of what I'm saying. But I appreciate what you're saying, you know, you raised these issues. But I'm hopeful that hearing from Chief Bush will reassure people that their rights will, well, they will not, our police will not cooperate and work with ICE.
Chief has been consistent about this since it came out.
Yes, but just one, one, just point of information. I just want to say that there's a New York For All Act. We, Berndad talked about a state law, and there is something, a bill, that I just want to share that with people because you were talking about it. So apparently, and one thing to just say is, apparently, we're not the only jurisdiction that used ICE for interpretation, because it's actually something that the state law talks about. It says, "It prohibits officers from using public resources for immigration enforcement except when required by law, prohibits investigations, interrogations, inquiries, or a collection of information about immigration law violation or about immigration status, nationality or county of origin, a country of origin, except when required by law, prohibits notification of release date or court dates, prohibits transfer of people to ICE custody, prohibits entering a person's immigration status into a database unless necessary for a public program benefit, prohibits the use of immigration and customs enforcement or customs border protection as interpreters, and requires written notice of rights denotes in the event that ICE, CPB, are allowed access for interviews. It does not prohibit officers from complying with valid court orders and federal judicial warrants." So I encourage all of us, sounds like Berndad, you would support this because you think it should happen at the state law, so I encourage you and everyone about, who knows, who cares about this issue, to support the New York For All Act.
A motion to vote has been made, and Mary, did you say you seconded it? I did hear.
I seconded.
Thank you. Terry, let's go, roll call. I do want to remind everybody that Terry and Siri apparently sound very alike, that the motion reads, "A motion to adopt the attached immigrant and community safety resolution." Roll call.
Trusty Vandeke.
No.
Trusty Price Bush.
No.
Trusty Bass.
Yes.
Trusty Ray.
Yes.
Mary Rossi.
Abstained, because this is not an immigrant and community safety resolution, it is a sanctuary village resolution. Therefore, the motion is actually not germane in this place.
All right, can I talk to that?
No.
That's absurd.
It is two to two to one. The one is carried to a no for the purpose of yeses and no, so it's two to three, the resolution fails. Can I get a motion, hopefully?
So the immigrant community safety resolution is the name of the resolution, Frank.
Excuse me, it is over.
It's the name of the resolution.
It's over.
So your saving is wrong.
Uh, get this back here. Yeah. I was gonna actually do a mayor's announcement, so I'll do it there. Yeah, sorry.
We still have the S.C.
Yep. Can I get a motion approving the payment of fire equipment testing incorporated for the service, service test services at the cost of $4,649.80?
I'll second.
Trusty Vandeke, son?
I'll second.
Trusty Price Bush, discussion. Am I mischaracterizing that at all or anything?
No, I was good. I apologize, but the invoice went to the wrong address.
No problem.
Which was a holdup, and this was pre-approved with a $5,000 cost to it earlier last year.
Thank you, appreciate that. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the agreement between the Village of Boston Spa and Boston Area Community Center for a total of $17,000 and authorizing the mayor to execute that settlement?
I'll make the motion.
Boy, that was a tie.
It's the last meeting.
I haven't made any.
Trusty Vandeke, second. Wow, that was close, I don't think.
We're very new to this.
Discussion.
Yes. So is it definitely the case that they are being paid the full $17,000 in one lump sum?
Yes.
All right, because the contract does not say that.
It does say that, just in different words. And I've confirmed with council for BACC. They're in agreement with the contract that's written.
Right. The contract says there's gonna be two payments, but I'm glad that they're going to be paid in one lump sum, because of the timing of the year right now, it's so late. Thank you.
Just for the record, you and their counsel have been working very well together to make this happen. He understands some of our concerns pre-existing, and we've landed where everybody's gonna get what they need here to make sure we're doing our job and making sure that the money's being used for programming, that's intended. All in favor?
All right.
Oppose, motion carries. Any other? Opposed? Motion carries. Any other questions?
Just me.
Yeah, let me go to mayor's announcements, and we'll do it there. Okay, I, I brought up, uh, bus shelters earlier. Let me complete that. Um, Bernard and I were on a, uh, team's call, uh, last week with, uh, CDTA. Uh, it's a good news, bad news situation because, uh, the, an organization you're fond of over there, Sean, is kind of giving us a problem, uh, because, yeah, it's, it's a greater than $100,000 expense going on between the two intended shelters and the accommodation being made for a crosswalk at McMaster Street area, uh, for that bus stop area. And so what's happening is it's forcing another $11,000 to be put into this by some DOT requirement or regulation. That, uh, basically, the long story short is this. They can afford to do re-shops. They can afford to do the crosswalk. The one at Double Day Woods, in terms of the actual bus shelter at Double Day Woods, is, uh, a financial problem for their budgeting right now.
We should explain why. It's because there's basically, uh, power cables that are unprotected, essentially underground, so it's more complicated.
$18,000 expense for that as well, uh, for grid. I'm gonna be talking to grid to see what we can do there. Um, the $11,000 in DOT, I don't fully understand if this is an accommodation being made for that bus shelter for the purpose of especially seniors at that, uh, location. Uh, this just feels like one of those $11,000 state red tape funds that doesn't fit here very well. On top of that, uh, we're working, uh, with county. We've gotta talk to Steve Bulcher to see what we can do, uh, with the county, possibly helping participate in this to offset, because they were asking for $30,000 for the village, from the village, to do this bus shelter. And I think it's avoidable, to say the least, and still, you know, getting that bus shelter in, uh, at the end of the day. So that's where we stand. They're progressing with the one at re-shop. They're gonna make the crosswalk situation occur at McMaster. Now, the only question remaining is Double Day Woods, which I think we all agree, we'd like to get that bus shelter over there in the protection of seniors that are gonna be using the bus over there. We'll, uh, keep posted on that. If you can think of any ways to get us out of the $11,000 part of the conundrum, I can, uh, work on the other stuff, uh, on this, so.
It won't be a conflict of interest from us from now.
Save, save, save us money.
I don't know, he might be like, snooze on who this is.
Hi, Sean Raymond.
Who's that? I don't know who that is.
Uh, Terry. Um, Terry is one of those people that, you know, I just, I turn to every day in this office, and it's gonna be very, very tough on me personally to not be able to turn to her every day, at least in the office. Uh, she's just, you wanna talk about the institutional knowledge that she brings to this table? And losing that is gonna be a huge loss. Uh, there's just no avoiding that. You don't realize what she does day to day. Foil comes in, foil request comes in. She's gotta work directly with Carl and Chief Bush and anybody else that's, uh, you know, relevant to it, to handle those. She handles these gosh darn minutes, uh, every time, and us ranting and raving when we used to have the five-hour meetings back, uh, years ago and everything else in the start of this. Um, just the general HR approach and a bunch of other things that she does day to day. Uh, the handicap stickers, uh, that, you know, what, you know, and birth death certificates. I mean, it's just, it's an unending scenario, records-keeping, uh, stuff as well. Um, she's gonna be missed, and I'm thrilled for her on one hand because retirement means she's gonna get to spend some great quality time with her two grandchildren that she has. Uh, and, you know, we, we had some nervous moments with the most recent one, but, uh, just like Terry, her grandchild is a fighter and is doing great. Keeping EJ, uh, you know, great parents over there, and, you know, I'm so thrilled that their family is thriving, uh, the way it is. So I want to congratulate her. I want to thank her. Uh, it breaks my heart to accept that resignation slash retirement, but I know she's gonna be extremely happy with what ends up happening. So if I could ask everybody one more time to help me thank Terry for what she's done for this village. In the meantime, Rebecca Little will be, obviously, there's gonna be an interim period because we're working to figure out the next steps here. Uh, it's gonna give us an opportunity right now to reevaluate some, where different tasks are in the office, upstairs and downstairs. The building department, uh, downstairs, to figure things out, to, to make us, in some ways, even better because Terry's pointed us in the right directions along the way. And focusing on where we go next here is important, and I'm gonna be looking to her for some counsel on that as much as anybody, so.
She might forget your number, too.
She might. Rossi who? But, uh, no, in all seriousness, uh, we have some decisions to make coming up here, but Rebecca is, uh, gonna step into that role as deputy clerk for the time being. Uh, and Terry has obviously taught her over the last year or so, uh, the, uh, stuff, uh, that she would need to take on here. She got her notary, uh, approval, uh, just recently, actually. So, uh, Rebecca will be very, uh, important in this whole thing down the line. Hard worker, as everybody knows here, and so we thank Rebecca for stepping in, uh, in the interim while we figure out the next steps here. Um, we do need to, uh, set an organizational meeting, uh, time and date. Uh, the proposal is January 1st for swearing in and for organizational meeting. And one other thing I'm gonna talk about in a second, uh, January 1st at noon. Uh, can I get a motion to, uh, approve that for organizational meeting for the 2026, uh, calendar year?
I'll make the motion.
Trusty Fandanza.
I'll second.
Trusty Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, isn't that a holiday?
It, it is, but it's still a lot big, and, uh, it happens actually more than you realize with that business.
Uh, it just makes attendance to that meeting that much more difficult for the public.
Well, that meeting is not a public comment meeting in the first place. This is just to get our, uh, folks, uh, handled at that point. There is one asterisk to that. I'll bring up in a second, but, uh, we're in a vote technically right now, so.
Okay.
Opposed or no?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, three ayes, uh, plus, I don't vote technically, are you and I?
I guess I'll vote for it. I'm not gonna be here, but it's fine with me.
You need to miss? Okay, fine. Uh, opposed? Uh, motion carries. Um, one thing we're gonna add, uh, we were trying to do it for tonight, but we are gonna have to, uh, wait till January 1st on this. As you may remember, Milltown Center, uh, in the town of Milton is gonna be utilizing, uh, the Village of Boston Spa as a water, uh, provider because it is partially in our original Water District Number Three in the town of Milton. To have that happen because of the number of users that are coming off of that, uh, there needs to be improvements to the Ville Joan Pump House, uh, there. It'd tune, give or take about $400,000 when you include engineering fees on top of, uh, and legal fees on top of the, uh, bid that we approved. Do we approve, we haven't approved the bid? No, we have not. We have an apparent low bidder, uh, basically, uh, currently at 335 or thereabouts. Uh, so then the other consulting piece or whatnot. That money, we will take the debt out for, but the town of Milton will collect money from the users in that district that are benefiting from the improvements and will pay the village the debt payments each year, uh, probably for, I would assume, 20-ish years is, uh, the general timeframe for these things. So that, uh, we're not gouging anybody, uh, year to year on that. But I did talk to Tom Samus Scott on Friday, uh, who is the developer or part of the development, uh, team. And I asked him, because we only have 18 users currently in Water District Three, I think it was, according to Scott Kearns. So taking on $400,000 in debt and having only 18 users, I kinda had a guilty conscience about that whole thing. As Carla knows, we're having this discussion. Tom said, basically, they are moving, uh, forward already with one-third plus of the units, like 180, I think he said, and, uh, some of the commercial, uh, units, uh, that they have planned there. So basically, right away, there's gonna be a good amount of users to share on that debt burden down the line. So that reassurance is important for us to know that we're not gouging any one user over there. Whether, you know, that's allowed or not, we're not doing it that way. It's gonna be distributed across multiple users, a big multiple number of users over there, Water District Number Three. So on January 1st, we've gotta finalize wording, uh, with, uh, respect to the IMA, which is the intermunicipal agreement between the Village of Boston Spa and the town of Milton, to get everybody's responsibilities down pat on this, who's paying what and how, who's collecting what and how, how it's gonna work in the town, adopting water law officially is part of that, too, for them, and allowing, uh, this process to begin. We have to do it on January 1st because we're running out of time with respect to how the bid worked in the first place for acceptance of the bid. But I, it is, uh, being told by Labella to the apparent low bidder what we're doing here and the timing. So they're not gonna, you know, get cold feet on this. They realize that we're progressing. We just have to fix this IMA at this point. That's why we're gonna, uh, work to approve it on January 1st to get that done and moving forward for everybody's sake. The village does stand to get, if all 500 units are built, plus, uh, some of the commercial units as well, in the vicinity of about $210,000 to $220,000 a year in additional water revenue. And that's important because that's going to enable us to stop doing the excess increases beyond inflation that we've been doing over the last couple of years to help pay for the infrastructure improvements that we've been doing, such as the water tower, uh, maintenance, uh, and other things as well. So i- if that's key, that's a, a lot of money, that's basically 10% of what we collect in tax revenue. Uh, just to give you perspective on that. And it's almost like a half percent of sales tax, uh, if you wanted to think of another way there. So that's important money for the village's future, and it allows us to also stop pushing upward the rates at a pace that some people were getting a little bit nervous about, but we're still well within market range for our water costs for outside users. And so that should be, uh, made clear. And obviously, there's gonna be a little extra debt burden for those coming online, and those 508 or private or whatever number of units that they've got. But the developer understands that. We had a good conversation about that aspect of it, too. So they know what's coming, uh, down the line. I just had to get them the, what it costs for a year of water, or half a year of water for a minimum user, uh, so that he, uh, can push that out there. Go ahead.
So this is the first we've heard about it. It's good news. Um, some of this, I, we were talking about doing it two years ago, the IMA piece, but, um, I'm glad it's happening now, and.
I think you're talking about consolidation is what you were talking about two years ago, of all the water districts. And preferably, I would have liked to have done that by now. Town Milton hasn't done that. We are pushing that for next year as well, because that's gotta get done. But this is, this is gonna be a one-off for now that will get consolidated in. So I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's good to know. And, I, I mean, have the finances been, uh, put down in writing, you know, in an Excel or something in terms of the excess, the, I think, uh, additional revenue, like you.
No, I was just, uh, doing straight multiplication because, you know, the outside users, about 400 and, what is it, $440 a year or something like that for water, uh, times the 500-plus units, so give or take on that. So that's why I can give you that kind of number like that.
So 180 for the first year, then 500, you said 180?
Units.
Units and 500.
Total is what the ultimate number is. So about one-third of the units will be built in this first phase.
When's the five, yeah. How long, how many years till the?
If they run quickly, uh, I think Tom Samus Scott's idea is to go and do the next phases all at once is what I can remember back during the discussion on the approval over there.
They have the one part, and then.
Like two, three years.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there's, there's a little bit of a time delay, obviously, because things have to get built. But the fact that they're sinking the money in to build these earnings is an important thing coming forward here. So just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Did I get anything important on that one?
Nope. We've just been working with the town, the town engineers, the town attorney. We have a draft agreement. There's just a few things we have to just button up on.
Um, next year, big focus will be on water system, next steps. You heard part of it during our discussion, uh, with respect to leak study and getting some of the, uh, sampling of meters to see what we're, we, what we aren't tracking correctly, uh, to a certain degree. But one of the biggest complaints we get continuously, and it's nice to see everybody come in and put their meter card in and everything else, but at the same time, the amount of complaints we get, uh, in the street for, my goodness, why am I still reading my meter? Uh, and, you know, I can't get to the darn meter because it's, uh, you know, buried underneath X, Y, and Z in my basement and everything else. Uh, we have to modernize our water system in that, uh, respect. Uh, that would cost money, and that is why we're going after a grant to a certain degree because, uh, probably it's about a two-and-a-half million dollar cost to do what we need to do with respect to meters if we wanna go for the radio read approach or something along those lines. Radio read also allows you to catch problems at sites early. Okay, so that if you see a big spike, uh, during non-cool season, we'll call it, uh, we were hearing stories about some, some guys' life got saved because they noticed it, went to actually check on what was going on, and the guy was non-responsive but alive still when they got there. So this is actual real stuff that, uh, they see in the field on, you know, the ability to monitor water usage. This is not about being big brother. This is about realistically just trying to do what we can, uh, to improve on this system in ways that we've been hearing left, right, and center. This is what people wanna see down the line. Uh, but again, uh, it will cost two-and-a-half million dollars. There are 80% grants out there for that, and that's where Down Roads comes in. And again, we may not get this next, this next year, but starting the process is gonna be important to go there. Uh, you know, we've tossed different ideas around. We also have to look at the general billing process, the ability to pay online a little bit easier. You can pay online, but it's, it's a big, bit of a pain on both ends for us, uh, with how we do it. So we're trying to figure out ways to help eliminate some of the administrative headache on all this for everybody involved. So that's gonna be a focus for next year as well. I just wanted to give everybody that, uh, look. We are in the middle, and Paul Dukabarger, actually, who's an incoming trustee, sat in on a meeting with me, uh, about a month ago or so with, uh, Capitol Region Transportation Council folks regarding the 25 mile per hour study and other, uh, mobility and pedestrian, uh, safety enhancements, uh, in review that they're going to do. Remember, uh, it's basically, we're getting about $90,000 from, uh, the state, uh, from the CRTC to do this study. And as we talked to them, they also had the ideas of, hey, if you wanna go for a TAP-CMAC grant, uh, we can help you out with respect to doing some of the field work that will be putting you in the best possible position. Problem is that they took so long to register this whole process for us. We, you know, back in April, when I think we first got word that we were awarded this, uh, we would have had time to probably do everything we need to do to become TAP-CMAC eligible. I sat in, I literally two-and-a-half hour call today for TAP-CMAC. Uh, we are not in a position to qualify, but I did take note of some things that we can do and ask CRTC to do with us to make us better for the next round of this. So having the ADA transition plan will be helpful, but also having some of the guidance from this process, and they wanna work with us to make us TAP-CMAC ready, uh, that next go-around. So, uh, it wasn't fully a waste of two-and-a-half hours of my life, but, uh, unfortunately, we're just not there right now. Uh, so, uh, just want everybody to know that we are working on that, uh, and that, the 25 mile per hour part is only part of what CRTC, CRTC is going to offer. I will say, if you see people in the field, uh, next year, kind of doing speed surveys and investigation or whatnot going on, don't be alarmed. That's part of all this, and we'll try to announce that a little bit better next year so that folks know who's coming where and when and how.
And there's all, all, uh, whole committee associated with this grant, too.
Once they're ready for it, they're still writing up the, uh, first draft of everything on their.
Right, right. Eventually, you'll have, you'll be looking for volunteers.
So, yep, but they also are particular on the people they want. Darlene McGraw is actually somebody that would be a good fit because they want people that, uh, have ADA concerns, and she's vocal about that, obviously. So she jumped to, uh, everybody's mind right away type, uh, situation. So, uh, they are particular in how we form that committee in the first place, who comprises it, et cetera. So we'll have to listen to their expertise on that. Uh, I think that's it for me. I will give a treasurer's report here real quickly. Sure, well, there we go. Meter cards are mailed out at the end of November. They have arrived on or before summer first. Please make sure you fill them out and return them within 30 days to avoid a $50 fee for not reading your meter. Uh, we are working on our employee health re. We are working on our employee health reimbursement spending account transition. As effective January 1st, 2026, we will no longer be using lifetime benefit solutions for any medical claims for the new year. Employees have any claims to submit for the year 2025, they will have to wait, they will have until the end, I should say, of February 2026 to submit those claims. We'll be transitioning to WEX HRA for 2026. Mortgage tax for the first, I'm sorry, for the time period of April 1st, 2025, September 30th, 2025. Saratoga County Board of Supervisors approved the total amount of $5,23,987.62. That was on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. In total, this increased $431,000 from November 2024's distribution. And the village received the November 2025 mortgage tax distribution in the amount of And this was an ACH deposit to the village bank account on November 19th, 2025. The village of Boston Spa received $35,665.05 in the same time period, 2024, showing a decrease for us of $7,000. Unfortunately, that comes down to such value issues, so that's why. November sales tax for Saratoga County was $13.7 million. It was $799,000 higher than the previous year's $12.9 million. Year-to-date is up by 4.23%. I saw some news about the fact that sales tax pretty much area-wide is going well. And the village received $117,300 on November 21st, 2025. Bank reconciliations have been sent to the trustees, and that is it. I'm done talking. Thank God.
We're losing the young people in here.
I am happy to be done.
Okay.
Liaison reports.
Just two quick things. The wrap for the site, the Rickett site, there's some adjustments the printer had to do. So it's a little behind, but it should be installed like the week of the 15th. And then want to congratulate the BSBPA for a really nice holiday parade and Christmas tree lighting. It's always really special for people in the community. So appreciate all the volunteers, all the planning cooperation from our, you know, public safety, you know, both the police department, fire department. It's always honestly the highlight of my season. And just want to make note that they are having their holiday mixer on December 16th at 6:00 PM at Iron's Edge Restaurant. I encourage people to go. It's usually a lot of fun. So there's information at boston.org about it.
Where's Dana? She's on.
Oh, she's on. Hi, Dana. Thank you, Dana.
Ben.
Breakfast with Santa was a hit again, and thank you for all the volunteers and who were there working and who've donated delicious cookies. The menorah lighting is going to be held December 15th at 7:00 PM. And if that's not right, Charlene maybe is that right? So if you haven't been there, it's beautiful to watch it light up. The library is still closed through December 12th for the asbestos abatement, and they will be having a pause to read will be held September 20th on Saturday, 11:30 until 12:30. It's open to kids from kindergarten through fifth grade, and they get to read to Georgie the therapy dog. And the Boston Spa area seniors are going to be holding their own breakfast with Santa on Saturday, December 13th from 9:00 AM until 11:00 AM. Tickets are available for purchase on December 11th, and the cost is $2. Members only are invited to that. So if you're not a member, you've got time to join and have breakfast with Santa. And that's it.
Thank you, Ben.
All right. Committee on the Arts. The next Sounds of Winter will be January 17th, the three piano Brookside. It's the Arabeth Piano Trio, piano, violin, and cello. And then also on February 14th, Valentine's Day, is a Touch of Woodlands, a chamber music group. These are both free, but you need to reserve a ticket. They often sell out. And it's, you can reserve brookside.org. We've been told, Saratoga Arts informed us that applications for funding have doubled this year. So the Sounds of Winter and also Summer is partially funded by them, so hopefully they'll continue. Also, First Friday Open Mic at the Real McCoy Beard Company, 28 Washington Street, starts 5:30 PM. That would be January 2nd, if they don't cancel for New Year's, if that happens. And the next meeting of the Committee on the Arts is December 10th at 7:00 PM at Brookside. And now the Park and Tree Liaison Report, written by Kaiten Parwana, the chair. The Park and Tree Board is enjoying the newly lit holiday tree in Wiswell Park, and they hope that everyone who attended enjoyed the parade and tree lighting. They also want to encourage folks to attend the Boston Spa Task Force's menorah lighting on Monday, December 15th at 7:00 PM. When planting improvements in Wiswell, making sure it could accommodate the many different seasonal events in the park was a priority from open space to increased electrical capacity. Also this evening, the Park and Tree Board would like to thank trustee Baskin, who has been our liaison for the past several years. He has been with us through all of the Wiswell Park Improvement Plans. Every Arbor Day, rain or shine, he steps up and got his hands and boots dirty while assisting in tree planting. We appreciate his presence, guidance, and dedication to helping our board and our community. Thank you, Caitlin. The next Park and Tree meeting is Tuesday, December 16th at 7:00 PM at the Cornell Cooperative Conference. That's it.
Sean.
All right. So, you know, obviously, the purchase of that salt, you know, kind of know what the DPW's been doing. But beyond that, they've also, they're going to try picking up leaf, leaves and brush again. The snow kind of put a damper on it and having to take the boxes off and put solters on, stop that for a little while. But they're going to try to fit that in, in between the snowstorms. And they, obviously, everybody's seen the Christmas decorations. Great job. And also all the preparation for the Christmas parade. And they've been doing some inside organization of DPW and have almost completed winterizing the hydrants. So, and there's always everyday work, doing fixing things and other things that break. So, but that's it.
We are at 8:55, technically at the five-minute, 11 mark. 42-hour rule would come into effect, but we obviously don't want to be, you know, hard-edged about that situation. There are some things that we have talked about already on this list. I would assume zoning, we can check off.
Yeah, we can, we can pass. I've said everything I need to say.
Parade law?
The parade law, I want to say there is, I just wanted to clarify for the public that it is not necessary to have a permit to have a protest on a sidewalk with signs as long as you're not violating any laws, such as blocking the sidewalk or making too much noise or anything else. You don't have to have a permit, correct?
It is appreciated.
Not necessarily because, yeah, what, what in the wintertime where if you have snowbanks, you're making it an ADA passable, and that becomes the problem. And so it's probably smarter to avoid any kind of problem. And this is why everybody else has gotten them in the last year, because they understand out of abundance of caution, just in case that's going to happen, at least you've gotten a permit to do with this.
Right. I have a whole Facebook post on why it's helpful to get a permit. I also have lots of feedback from village council that a parade permit is not required for protests. And that is a message that is very important to tell you because sometimes people just, they may organize something in a week, and there may not be a board meeting, and that's okay. You can be on the sidewalk, not blocking people with a sign, or even in the park without a sign. That's okay.
Well, a park is an event. That's not, that's a different round.
You can still go in. We've talked about this.
It's not, it's not content-specific. No, it's actually for park purposes. No, that's why the Charlie Kirk event was basically a permit for park usage with insurance in that case. It was a different round. We don't require insurance for the abnormal protest situation that's on sidewalks. We have distinguished those two things.
But a person can, or people can be in a park not breaking any laws with a sign. I mean, if you're not breaking any laws, you can do that. And, and that needs to be clear because communications from this office to the people organizing the event last weekend indicated that they could not have the event without a permit. And then if they had the event, if they had the event, they would be penalized. They were sent the penalties for that.
Yes, you were. And I was there, ma'am. I wouldn't have occurred. And excuse me.
What I'm saying is correct.
If we're going to do this, yes, I was there. There is a law. There are penalties for violation of a law. You can feel that you, they don't apply to you. They apply to everybody in this room equally.
The fact is, that law does, you do not need a permit to do what she did.
Ma'am, you'll have a chance for public comment in a second, but if you're going to pipe up about the idea that you were told this, yes. I was having a discussion with the clerk about it, and that's where it came from. I also warned Chief Bush, and we asked Chief Bush to make sure that everything was okay in that situation. It wasn't the intent to penalize anybody. A law exists. A law exists. And if somebody's going to violate the law in terms of a blockade or something like that.
She did not have a blockade.
Ben.
No blockade.
If I violated the law.
Which she didn't. There was no.
I wasn't there, so I don't know.
No, there's no blocking of the sidewalk. And, and that is okay. In fact, she did not, organizers not even have to tell the village they're going to have a protest. That was done out of courtesy to the police and for safety. And that, and so she did contact the village for those reasons, but she did not have to do that either. You can just show up on the sidewalk, not break any laws, and hold a sign. That is legal. It's our constitutionally protected right.
Carl, do you have any? Board openings?
All right. So anyway, there are a lot, the basic message there is, there's a lot of board openings. There's a lot of ethics board openings. There's planning board openings. There's zoning board of appeals openings, and people should be encouraged to apply. One way to apply is the committee interest form that's on the website, and others would be just to contact you, send an email of interest.
We'll be advising.
And we really should, as I've said multiple times in the past, publicize these openings on Facebook, on our website, so that we get a wide variety and a deep bench, variety of people to apply for these jobs because there's a lot of talent, but they don't know that they can put their talent to use for the village unless they are informed of that. So I hope that we can publicize all these openings very widely. I hope that the ethics law will continue to say that, that ethic, all, as we did in a bipartisan manner, say that all board members will have to be approved by a majority of four on the board, that you can only have three, a maximum of three people from the same party. Again, the spirit is to, is bipartisanship. And I hope that continues and that we see the ethics board reconstituted without delay.
Much like I just was talking about parade code applying to everybody, the current code applies to us as well, and therefore, what's in the code is going to be followed. Ben?
Well, you said you changed it and you delayed, you delayed replacing Danielle Thompson with the rationale that you're going to change the ethics code. So that's why I bring it up.
No, that wasn't about that. It was about the fact that I had complaints against me at that one point in time. And then unfortunately, there was two more against me last month. And if you're asking the question of why people don't want to be part of the ethics board anymore, look no further for your answers, probably. Sean Keywood, $80,000 sidewalk question. Go for it.
Yeah. So to give, give the public some background, the mayor negotiated reimbursement of about $80,000.
I get a grant, basically, from a private organization.
Yeah, a grant as part of compensation for the damages that were caused on East High Street. My question is regarding that, is that money going to go into the general sidewalk fund?
It's going to be held aside depending what Carl is, research is about how we can utilize it. And so we're going to be making sure that it is, if it ends up in fund balance, which alone, I don't think we'll have this determined by that point before we go into there. We're going to hold it aside so that we know we have $80,000 portion. It most likely will, but with a special focus on the streets that were most affected. East High Street being first.
My question was, did Keywood's damage impact any sidewalk?
It impacted people's enjoyment of their streets. So that's what.
Understood. Were any sidewalks damaged?
I don't know, Sean.
Okay. I think that's something we need to find out. And we should also, if we're going to use that money for sidewalks, is it going to follow the current guidelines in that individuals would have to pay their portion for the repair of the sidewalk?
That's what the research is from Carl, as far as how we can utilize it and maximize it. So that's what we're looking to hear for.
Well, I would think that would already follow our policies and that we already have.
Yeah, we actually did talk about it a couple meetings ago.
I also think.
I have not conducted this research, I'll say that.
Understood, understood. But I also, I just don't want an arbitrary method used. We already have a method. We have an ADA plan. We should be using that as a map to use those funds. And it may not necessarily be on East High Street. East High Street has locations identified in the ADA plan, and yes, I certainly could use it. But if they have ADA-compliant sidewalks, there's no reason to replace them.
You haven't walked to East High Street much lately, have you?
Again, I said, if they, they don't have ADA-compliant sidewalks, yeah, I've walked many parts of it that sidewalks are in excellent condition. So there may be sections.
Large.
Well, and there's large sections that have already been identified in the ADA plan that are probably in far worse condition. So I'm, I'm just want to see us actually stick to our guns. We adopted an ADA plan. We said we were going to implement that plan. And when we have funds to do so, we should. And we should also follow our policies if that money should go into a sidewalk fund. And anybody on East High Street has to follow the same policies that anybody anywhere else regarding their share in the amount of reimbursement.
Keywood's intention for this money was to compensate those most directly impacted by the proper use of a street as a non, a non-truck street as a truck street, as Chief Bush can attest to, because we were issuing tickets at one point until we came to a resolution about how they're going to handle repavement after we discovered just what they were doing to that street. And obviously, trucks running through a non-truck street is a cause of lack of enjoyment of one's own street in that situation. So that's, that was the intention of Keywood. So we're going to try to abide by at least the intention in that situation to make sure that those most directly affected are going to receive the benefit in that situation. We have money in our coffer for other streets as people want to handle it. The question really becomes, what's the maximization of that money? We want to obviously do as much sidewalk as we can, no matter where the sidewalk is with the money. And so that's the question that we're looking at. It's helpful, Carl.
I'm going to be honest, it's probably enough if it's mainly focused for Hyde and East. There are significant wonky sidewalks that, you know, or ones that need to be repaired. I think, I think it's going to, I think it's a good idea to use that as a guiding, like, resource to, like, which ones need to be tackled first. But I, I'm going to bet a lot of it's going to be in those areas anyway, because just the amount.
That corner sidewalk scenario that we just saw, the $4,000, the reality of the cost was, I think, $18.
Yeah. Who's going to determine ADA compliance?
Who's going to determine the ADA compliance insofar as?
When we do allocate that money for those areas, if you decide to use it, you know, in that area.
I think we empower DPW to do that, right?
Yeah. One of the plans going forward was to name the paving streets, go using the ADA transition plan inventory, and then also looking at subsequent defects that have formed on those streets and trying to get them to do their new sidewalk before we go in and pave it. Because the best order of events is to get the sidewalk done before somebody's going to come down and ruin it with a cement mixer basically down that street.
So, so a representative from DPW is going to determine whether those areas are ADA compliant or not.
Well, no. Well, no. Realistically, the inventory already exists. And then I'm saying there may be additional panels that have subsequently come into one of those categories. That's what they'll probably look at and see if they need to knock on an additional door to say, hey, you gotta go take your sidewalk.
I think what he's saying, once the work's done, who's gonna determine?
Well, I'm saying first, who's gonna determine that they're non-compliant with ADA, need to be repaired?
And that's in the inventory.
You guys are both, okay. Sorry, I'm just trying to catch what you both are talking about.
And then I'm saying anything additional, uh, DPW will have the ability to knock on that additional door to say, hey, you're, you're just as bad as the one that's on this inventory that was on the list for some reason. So.
Alright, that's all I have.
Appreciate it. And it turns statements. Who wants to go first?
You go.
You're senior trustee.
He's just called the law. Some friend he is.
Alright. Um, usually, I'm pretty charge and sweet, so I'll make an exception. To quote a song familiar to folks in my age range, what a long, strange trip it's been. Uh, it's hard to fathom, almost nine years have gone by since I took the oath of office. I think more changes, in particular board changes, have happened in that time than in the preceding 20 years. I have been a trustee under four mayors.
It's your fault, huh?
And seeing the faces of the board change excluding myself more than once. The first change was the election where I and my first running mate, Noah Shaw, were elected. And, uh, we were the first Democrats to sit on the board in a long, long time. Then in the first few months, having to deal with comptroller audits and previous year's budgets not being closed out and a general financial disarray that we found ourselves in. Thankfully, the rest of the board was receptive when Noah and I recommended bringing outside help for this process, which is still a practice today. The board recognized that the budget deficits we were and would be facing due to the absence of needed revenue, uh, due to the not implementing incremental tax increases the decade prior. So the rest of the board agreed when Noah and I recommended one of the largest single-year tax increases in village history. In the space of a couple of years, we went from a $40,000 fund balance, really a contingency fund, to a $2 million fund balance, setting up the village for success in dealing with many infrastructure issues we face. I commend Mayor Wilbright and Mayor Fitzpatrick on their efforts to make that happen and grow that fund balance during their tenure. With that balance continuing to grow under the stewardship of Mayor Rossi with his proposed, uh, tax increases in the coming years. It's been good to see some of the initiatives first conceived and proposed and developed by previous boards eventually come to fruition under this current board. Purchase a new fire equipment through a fund made possible by restructuring fire protection rates for the surrounding towns. Uh, something recommended by, uh, Noah Shaw and myself, and it continues to incrementally increase. The restructuring of water rates, uh, that was recommended, uh, by that board. The water uses, so we inverted the water usage rates so that the highest users were paying a higher rate than the lower users. It was further increased by the rates being different for outside users, uh, by that board and subsequent boards. And has resulted in significant increases in water revenue and has become a major contributor to our fund balance, continuing to increase. And has contributed to the recent purchase of much-needed equipment for DPW Fire Department and Police, the Police Department. The lack of water districts, which was brought up today, and the impact on the eligibility of the village to receive grants, was identified as part of the water sewer infrastructure study commissioned by Mayor Fitzpatrick. And hopefully, we will continue to progress that particular thing, water districts, so that we have the potential to increase our funding by getting grants other than just by raising taxes and water rates. The revitalization of Whizwall Park conceived during Mayor Wilbright's tenure, with significant contributions by trustee Cormos and trustee Baskin on the initial and further concepts. It has been realized through the sale of Woods Hollow, using the proceeds of that, uh, for park improvements. The proposed renovation of John Street Tower next year, originally conceived as part of the water sewer infrastructure study, also commissioned by Mayor Fitzpatrick. And finally, the idea to overhaul the existing zoning law, beginning with the new comprehensive plan, was first conceived during Mayor, Mayor Wilbright's tenure and heavily advocated by trustee Cormos, trustee Baskin, and myself, is now within our grasp and should be completed early next year. It's now up to the public to make it their own, so be vocal in upcoming hearings. If you're not satisfied, if you're not satisfied with it, there's still time to change it. Even with all these accomplishments, there's still much to do. And I hope the following concerns will be addressed by the new and remaining members of the board. I hope the condition of our sidewalks will be addressed with a comprehensive law that includes a reimbursement schedule with financing options, mandatory replacement of sidewalks not in compliance with federal and state standards, and provides for the infill of missing section of the village's pedestrian transportation network. This is something I ran on both terms and unfortunately hasn't had little progress. And our current legislation has few results that address those needs. I hope the board addresses the insufficiencies in our sidewalk law and policies and the resulting deficiencies in our sidewalks as identified in the village's ADA plan. I hope the board uses the ADA plan as a map to fix the worst sidewalks first and not some arbitrary method, as this was the purpose of creating and adopting this plan. I hope the board will make sidewalks a priority before a tragedy occurs due to people walking in the streets, due to some of the poor or nonexistent condition of our sidewalks. I hope we address the need to create reserve funds so that potential granters will not pass us by because our balance sheet makes us look flush with undedicated funds. Otherwise, our only recourse will be to continue to raise taxes to address our growing infrastructure needs. Lastly, I hope the good work in policy-making that I and other board members have done does not get undone by political partisanship to aid special interests or to consolidate authority. As I've said more than once in, at meetings, the public is the first, second, and third priority. We are elected officials, therefore public servants. What I mean by serving the public, I mean the greater public, and their concerns and needs are the priority. Not just the interest of the few that might have the same party affiliation, have business interests within the village, or simply may have been generous during past, present, or perhaps future election cycles. After all, it is the residents that provide for the village budget, budget through their taxes. And the board isn't doing its job if their money isn't being spent with their best interest at the forefront. To the trustees-elect, I wish you the same success and more that I feel I've experienced during my tenures trustee. All it requires is an open mind and a lot of work. In conclusion, I want to address the public and thank you for the opportunity to be your servant. It hasn't always been easy, but it has always been rewarding. Alright, I only wrote a short thing, so.
Ooh, really?
Happy to know.
Is it a one-pager?
First, first I want to thank the people of Bolster Spa for giving me the great honor of representing you as a village trustee. I truly appreciate your confidence and trust. My partners and I on the board have been able to make a difference in the laws and policies of this village despite the constant political attacks. Government should be run according to the principles of transparency, teamwork, honesty, accountability, equal treatment, ethical conduct, and the rule of law. I have done my best to follow and promote those principles in village governments. My words of advice for the new board members, don't be afraid to ask questions. Question the version of reality you are handed. Ask for more information when information has not been provided. Call out unethical behavior. Insist on rules that apply to all and that are applied consistently and fairly. Expect to put in a lot of hours. And always put the village's best interests ahead of your own political interests. In the end, they are the same. The whole village will be rooting for you to succeed. Thank you and good luck.
Public comment, I have an issue, three minutes. If that was unconsumed, this will be a time to raise your hand. Ellie?
Did it go first?
Yeah.
At least didn't raise her hand right away.
It's a one-pager.
Ellie Dillon, 116 Malta Avenue, Bolster Spa. And this is directed to Sean and Ben. Sean, you have served this village for nine years as a trustee. You are an instrumental member of the team that set right a sinking financial ship which today's current board continues to benefit from. Even in your final months of service, you remain vigilant as a financial watchdog. Thank you for your dedication and lasting contributions to our community's financial health. And Ben, during your five years of tenure on the board, you tenaciously champion, championed transparency and due process. You sought fair representation for all residents. You made sure the community was informed and up to date on issues. Your unwavering commitment to the village makes you the true conscience of this board. So thank you, Sean and Ben. Every resident of this village owes you both a depth of gratitude. My wish is that the new board, come January, will follow in your footsteps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie.
John Cormy, 132 Bath Street, Bolster Spa. I have a question. Just leaving here just for this question. And about is, has anybody heard anything about any movement, um, in reference to the Tannery property? I've heard conflicting reports. And I'm just wondering if anybody's heard anything about, um, any plans that are going on? If, what, if so, what has anyone heard?
Generally, that they're still pursuing it is what I know and.
We're waiting for an update from that organization, so.
Isn't there a meeting January or December 29th or no?
I have no idea. It's not on my desk. It's not mine. No, Carl's got it.
Alright, I heard that secondhand anyway. But that they're coming back and they have a meeting.
I've heard that they've given up on it, but they're coming, so I don't know what's going on.
I've heard rumors too.
We've heard nothing negative or positive at this point, so.
Okay, so there's nothing. Now we can go home and have dinner.
There you go. I'm sorry. She was handing the number or something. I would've told you.
Thank you for appearing, Sean.
Sir, it's John.
Oh, Richard Bash on Chapman Street, Bolster Spa. I'm here today also to thank Ben and Sean for your service to the village. I want to thank you for taking on this work, work which many of us sitting here have considered but have declined to commit to because of the time commitment required and because also the contentious nature of this operation recently. And to my friend and running pal, Ben, I will note, Ben can argue a point. You know this, but I'll say it again. Ben can argue a point. I understand that this commitment to a healthy debate was not always well-received here. But to you and to Sean, I will say, your experience base, your willingness to research issues, your voice and your opinions will be missed. You helped shine light on our village government. And during your tenures, participation in government and on our village committees has grown, and that is a good thing. Government can appear to run more efficiently, and it can be easier, maybe seem more orderly, and maybe even more tidy with one party rule. But for sure, something is lost when opposing views are not considered, and, excuse me, there's a problem. Are not considered or debated. Many here probably can bemoan that fact in state government. I can remember years ago when this village had meetings that were very short. And while all the members were very fine people, village meetings were really mostly a yes-man activity. No discuss, no discussion was held at the meetings, no alternate views or suggestions were brought to the table. It was just five aligned votes on most all the issues. And while there is reason to think that we may be heading back in that direction, I know and I hope that that doesn't need to be the case. And so I congratulate the new village trustees, and I thank the current trustees for your service, to your continued service. And I hope that you as a board and you as individual members will be able to bring to the table issues that address the diverse needs and interests of our community and that you will offer these issues up for a current debate and discussion. Thank you.
Let's go.
The, uh.
Zoom?
I go deeper?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike Ikalucci, 3 Encore Drive. I'll be very brief. I just want to say as well, thank you to trustees Raymond and Baskin. Your time, energy, and efforts over the number, last number of years have been very much appreciated by many of us. I know that there have been a lot of disagreements among the five members of the board. And at times, it has been rather tumultuous. But I am of the belief that Sean and Ben always were acting in the best way that they saw possible for the good of the community. And that really is what we want and need from our elected representatives. So thank you both. And to all five of you members of the board, as well as village attorney, happy holidays. Thank you.
Happy holidays, man. Jared, next?
Oh, he's still there.
Jared, did you watch where your hand up? So raise it, please. There it is. Go ahead, Jared.
Good evening. Um, just a few quick notes. First, I saw the motion regarding zoning and the new draft. Is that the version that's currently on the website? Is that something that we will all be able to review along with the planning board and the zoning board of appeals at the next stage? And when will we, will we be able to review that? Second, I'm disappointed that the resolution regarding our neighbors, our immigrant neighbors, did not pass this evening, particularly since it was tied two to two in the vote before being invalidated by a procedural ruling. I'm curious where the mayor actually stands on the content of that resolution. Lastly, I want to thank trustees Baskin and Raymond as well for their service over the past years. It has been a pleasure getting to know both of you and to see you representing the village, all of our village residents here at each of these meetings every other week, and then all of the other committees and aspects of the village government that you've been a part of. Thank you for your service and best of luck to our incoming trustees.
Uh, Liz?
Can we just say the zoning draft will be made available, right? We've been told that that's happening.
I sent it. I'm not, I sent it to everybody.
Right, so it's, as soon as it's avail, we, we have agreed to make it available, right?
Jared?
Yeah. Would you like me to make that available?
Yes.
Thank you.
Liz Cormos, 89 Hyde. I would like to thank both Sean, Raymond, and Ben Baskin. I would like to thank both Sean Raymond and Ben Baskin for their tireless services, trustees, and for their consistently acting in the best interest of the village residents. Sean, along with Noah Shaw, exposed and began to address the dire financial position the village was in when they took office, laying the groundwork for the board when Christine Fitzpatrick and I joined in 2019. Together, we all moved the village from a deficit of $300,000 to a fund balance of $4.8 million, enabling critical investments in neglected fire, police, and DPW equipment, the purchase of a new police station, and funding for the restoration of the John Street Water Tower. In 2021, Ben was elected and Sean was re-elected, and together they pushed for the comprehensive plan and the accompanying zoning updates, which are now nearing completion. They also supported key planning and accessibility initiatives, including grants, the pedestrian and bicycle master plan, the BOA effort, the ADA transition plan. Ben in particular made substantial contributions during his term, revamping the village newsletter, leading the effort to have all departments report publicly, at least annually, and modernizing the board rules and procedures. Unfortunately, there's no longer having departments report publicly. Ben worked with trustee Raymond and me to create a fair and transparent process for residents to serve on village committees, including publicly posting all openings. He helped craft the current ethics law and diligently reviewed every draft local law to ensure it served the village well. They also extended, Ben extended the captain's volunteer program to seniors in Bolson Spa. They championed the ADA plan and proposed that the village assume responsibility for maintaining sidewalks. So, they actually got repaired and built, which unfortunately was rejected. Ben consistently pursued grants when there was, he was consistently supporting grants when there was resistance to allocating matching funds. They pressed forward on water infrastructure improvements and police building purchase when the leadership hesitated to act. They also pushed for the strongest possible outcome in the sale of Woods Hollow and advocated for creating reserve funds to position the village for more successful grant application. Throughout their service, they were willing to call out abuses of power and breakdowns of good governance. They spoke up when laws were not followed, meeting minutes were biased, when information needed for informed decision-making was withheld, and when the democratic process was ignored.
Speaking of which, ten seconds.
For all this work, dedication, and courage in standing up for the public good, I want to extend my deepest thanks to Ben and Sean for their service to the people of the village of Bolson Spa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Liz? Seeing then, other business including but not limited to Bolson Spa.
Just briefly, thank you to both of you. I wouldn't have gotten to know you guys as well as I did through this process and certainly.
For better or worse.
Yeah. No, I actually very much enjoyed getting to know you guys in different ways, and yes, there have been some battles. But I, you know, where we disagree, there are things I appreciate about you guys, you know, and we could always crack up with you. You're a very funny person. And Ben, I hope you continue to play saxophone. So, you know, I was thinking about Christine's wake, actually, just how many people got to know each other by getting involved, whether it be volunteering committee or, you know, putting your name, you know, for run. And I think we're all the better for it, and it's honestly a blessing that we get to know each other so well. And Rich, actually, your comments, it matters to me that people know that even though there might not be representation from the other side on this board in the coming future, that you still can talk to us, you know. Mine is probably the easiest email to know. It's trusteeberndett@bolsonspa.gov. But go on the website. We want to hear from people that may not agree with us, and I think it's healthy. And I think one of the biggest joys I've had is get to know people that necessarily agree with. So, thank you both, and I wish you the best, you know, just enjoying life and not having to be at a meeting on Monday.
Thank you, Bernett, and good luck with your work.
Thank you.
I have one thing further to say. So, just a funny little story about Ben and I. So, when Ben and I decided to run, I started running for the second term, Ben decided to be my running mate, you know, the idea was, while I was senior trustee, and so, you know, we titled it Raymond and Baskin. And then I started thinking, we should really make it Baskin and Raymond because it sounds like Baskin and Robbins, and everybody loves ice cream.
There's been 31 flavors in that song here.
So, thank you, Ben, for being my running mate and, you know, doing this last term. And yeah, Ben can attest, we don't always agree on everything.
You know that.
But I appreciate your passion, so. I appreciate you as well.
Thank you for both of you, for your service, and I hope whatever you're going to do with your free time, you enjoy it well.
Thank you. Thanks for working with us with an open mind.
Looking in perverse way, it's because of you two, I'm even sitting in this damn seat because I had no desire to do this in my lifetime. And look, sometimes you have to admit that the best ideas or the ideas end up being, you know, in your life, things you're most proud of, weren't even your idea in the first place, and happenstance happens. So, yeah, Ben, you and I, butt heads all the time. Sean, I think you're less agenda-driven. I think you actually have a much, more of a common sense approach. So, it was an interesting combination with you, especially at times on this board, which is a good thing. It's not a bad thing in that realm. I'm not trying to say it's bad in any way, shape, or form. But, you know, I enjoy talking to cowboys with you and, you know, seeing you at parades and talking with you. And I hope we do get to continue to talk because, believe it or not, we have shared vision on certain aspects of sidewalks. We do. And that's where the loan idea even came from, to be honest with you. I started thinking outside the box along with some things you were saying and tried to push that one or put it together. We're still working on it, but we're going to get there. You're going to still be there. You're still going to get your three minutes. You're still going to roast me every time you get a chance. Ben, I know it. It is what it is, and it's going to be my next two years of life. I get it, and that's fine. That's part of what this process is. You know, I might give you, though, like Christine, maybe three minutes and five seconds and won't tell anybody or something like that. But that was the thing. At the end of the day, and I said this to any mayor, even Ron Kimback one, you sit in the seat and you appreciate what mayor or any trustee or anybody in government goes through. And so, there's a certain level of yes, jousting, but yes, respect for what we do and what we go through in this realm. I tell people all the time, don't ever go into politics, especially in your mid-40s, because it's an interesting damning, if you do, damn if you don't type of situation. But when I stop the tongue-in-cheek, it's also very rewarding. I thank you for turning me in that direction by accident. I know you may regret that fact at this point, but I do thank you for the challenge. I do thank you for the energy, not necessarily the late-night emails, Ben, but hey, you know, listen, you can still send them on, even for your own email account along the way. It's been a unique experience. And, you know, Rich, you kind of focus on the idea that it's, you know, toxic and everything else. Sometimes, it's what we need to sort of spur some of the best ideas, some of the biggest passions, some of the things that are going to be most effective in preserving our community and enhancing our community, and that's the thing.
Well, thanks, Frank. I'm going to take it as a compliment because you are also extremely agenda-driven. So, I'm going to call that a compliment that you said that to me. But yes, I look forward to continuing our conversation from the other side of the table, and good luck with your work.
Thank you.
And feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions.
We're getting that $1,000 question handled. Because that one drives shade, I'll be honest with you. I can't sleep on it easily.
The one business item just is, I always thought that when we approved personnel at these board meetings, like they've been fully vetted, and that may not be the case, that background checks happen afterwards, and I wonder if we should put in our motions, you know, board approval of so-and-so pending background check or something like that.
It's presumed. Dave, you want to tell why it works that way?
There's a lot of resources and a lot of money actually it takes to do a background check. It's a very long and hard process. We're not going to go through that if they're not going to be appointed.
Right.
So, the first step has always been to appoint and then background check. This guy was the first guy in my tenures as chief that stepped past me personally.
Yeah, I certainly was not aware that the background check happened afterwards. So, I guess we should all be aware of that. The new trustee should be aware of that, but it wouldn't hurt to add that phrase in the motion. This is a suggestion, you know, add the phrase, you know, approved by the board, pending a background check. So, it's just.
We'll call it the Baskin provision.
And we're still trustees till the end of the month. If you have any thoughts for us, send them along.
Here's my one thought. Cutting a motion.
I have one last thing.
Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Cutting a motion for vouchers be added in meeting. Richard, add 9:40 PM.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Trustee Baskin, discussion, all favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Happy holidays, everybody.
You want help moving that air conditioner out of the window because there's definitely.
It's cold.
Thank you, Chief Bush. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Everything you do.
Good to see you.